This meeting of the Westford School Committee from Monday, May 12th. This meeting is being recorded. The first item of business is to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, second order of business is our consent agenda. So we have meeting minutes from April 28th as well as a proposed FY '26 school committee meeting schedule. Has everyone had a chance to look at that? Any questions or feedback?
It's behind me.
All good? Okay. I'm looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Catherine, Bill. Okay. Any last questions? All those in favor of the consent agenda? Raise your hand. Any opposed? Good, okay. Next up is our public comment. A reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom. Raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelist and unmuted or in-person at the microphone in Millennium in the room. So we'll take a minute to see if there's...
Nobody online.
Nobody online.
No.
Just start by introducing yourself. Please.
Emily Teller, Nine Texas Road. That's what I say at town meeting. I just am here for two reasons, to welcome the two new candidates who are now elected to the school board. And even though I was here when each of you got on and some of your campaigns I worked on, I just want to say it's a great organization and I'm glad. It's a happy new year for you guys now going forward. And secondly, I was at the play, the final performance of Six at Westford Academy, and it was just fabulous, amazing, the whole new situation where they did theater in the round and had people on the stage. It was just terrific. And the ushers were terrific, too. And I just, I'm always one to stand up and speak for this, but the arts is so important in our kids' lives, increasingly important. And the caliber of those musicians probably had something to do with how early they started in the elementary schools. And there's a quote that I don't know who said it, but it was told to me once at a concert in Harvard, "Math and science are how we live, and art and music are why we live." And, you know, there's mixed feelings about that, but please, please continue to fund the arts. They're so important in Westford Academy. So, thanks.
Sure, you don't want to repeat your commentary?
As one of the queen's works.
We actually have one of them.
I just was kudos about the performance.
Thanks, Emily. Any other public comment? Nobody on Zoom still?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. Great. We'll move on to informational updates and start with our students.
Okay. So, I have a lot to update on because if I wasn't here two weeks ago, so let me kind of tie off, I guess, April break, which is crazy to still say, but we had Spanish exchange, French exchange, Costa Rica trip, and it all went wonderfully. From all, like, three trips, I didn't hear anything bad. I know I was on the Costa Rica trip and I had the time of my life. It was truly wonderful. The teachers coordinating it did an excellent job. And to reiterate what Ms. Towers said, I also saw Six a week ago, and it was amazing. Natalie, you were amazing. It was such a cool show, and I hadn't heard the story and the way the stage was set up. I knew you guys had some setbacks with that, but it was fixed beautifully and it still was a wonderful production. WA is also in the thick of AP exams, we're starting Week Two, so students are in and out of the building, seniors and juniors typically, or mostly. And so far, so good. There hasn't been huge problems. Lot of kids studying, though, and it's a lot of work. It's probably, you know, my absence last week, a couple weeks ago in Daniel's, we are very wrapped up in APs. We also had no school last week for elections on Tuesday, so that was cool. We had advisory number nine last Wednesday, or the other, other students did, I was on Capstone. We also had the art show on the eighth, and it was really amazing to see everyone's artwork up in the hallways. It was so cool. We really do have some talented students here in Westford. Junior Cotillion was Saturday, and that was also great. The weather turned like, on the dime, and it was perfect. I mean, my brother is a junior and it was raining up until he stepped outside to take pictures and the sun came out. It was so perfect. Looking at this week, on Thursday, the NHS Senior Recognition Ceremony is this week at 6:00 in the PAC, like I said, on Thursday. We have on Saturday, Senior Prom. Photos start at 3:45 in the Common. Fair warning, traffic will be awful as the Apple Blossom Parade is also that morning, so stay away from that area of town. Let's see, we have Bus Biddy's Best Buddies Prom on the 21st. That is in the cafe at 6:00, so very excited for that. And then also just looking more ahead, on May 20th, we have Junior Job Shadow Day, so that's really kind of getting the ball rolling for the college process and kind of the next steps for the upcoming senior class, so that's really exciting. Next week, we have Grade 10 MCAS Tuesday and Wednesday. Not so exciting, but necessary to graduate. And then again, Capstone ends, I can't believe it, next week, next Friday. That is crazy to say, I feel like it just started, but very exciting. And then the end of May, last day of May, the 31st, we have the Relay for Life on the Turf, that event, which will be awesome as well. So I think that's it.
Thank you. Thanks, Maddie. And we'll switch to administration updates.
Always difficult to follow.
Right.
But last Tuesday, we hosted our last professional development for the year. The format of the day's events followed the spirit of UDL, in which we had ed camps available for all of our teachers, pre-K through 12. There were offerings that were relevant to individual roles, a variety of different learning experiences, as well as really leaned on some of our own staff members to go ahead and lead some sessions. So it was a great day for the staff. We received excellent feedback, and we are very thankful for those who stepped up and offered a session, and especially to the elementary and secondary curriculum coordinators who brought the day together. So it was a great event. On Thursday of this week, from 10 to 1, Westford Academy will host the Third Annual WA Friends Invitational, and this is where students, athletes with and without disabilities will come together from Acton-Boxborough Regional High School, Burlington High School, Concord Carlyle, Gardner and Tewksbury. They will join our Westford Academy students, and hopefully we will have decent weather because it's been a wonderful event in the past, and we're looking forward to another one. Last Thursday, Bob Ware, Melissa Boylan and Kelly Diette joined me in a job fair in Ashburnham, where several different Department of Ed was represented, as well as maybe 30 different districts that were there. And so it was a nice event. We haven't been to a job fair in years, but we were able to collect some resumes, get that out to the principals today of some possible candidates. And I know of at least one interview that has been set up since that meeting. So with a little bit of luck, we're continuing to fill the positions that will be available in '25 and '26.
We are in the process of establishing the search advisory committee for the Blanchard principal position. As you saw in the announcement, Mr. Heslop has taken a job closer to home, and so we've opened up that position. We'll be doing a search process. We have, I think as of this afternoon, it was 22 applicants. We sent a, we sent a feedback form to families at Blanchard and to the staff at Blanchard that we'll keep open until Wednesday, as we're looking for information, for their thoughts about the next candidate, as well as if they were interested in participating on the search. I also shared with all of you that one of your members has expressed interest. We would like to have one member of the school committee to be on that advisory committee with us. We are anticipating having Courtney, myself, a school committee member, a curriculum coordinator, two staff members, two parents. And so that's all designed to have the first round of interviews the week before Memorial Day. And so I would maybe just ask of either, maybe if they just reach out to you, if somebody is interested in the committee and you can let me know?
Sure.
So additionally, we have, you've all heard this, but I'll share it for everybody, too. The great news for the ghostwriter is always winning awards, right? So Ghostwriter went to the Spring Conference, the New England Scholastic Press Association Spring Conference, in which they received third place in All-New England for their online publication. We already knew that Deepa Gautam and Aliza Kaliva were honored for their work, of Deepa as the Massachusetts Journalist of the Year. So I think they had, and they celebrated her there. The two of them were named to New England Journal, the All-New England Journalism Staff, and they also had the opportunity to host some workshops themselves. I think that was really, might have even been the highlight for them, the fact that they were actually leading workshops for their peers and that. And then they wanted us to share, the two advisors shared a couple of other folks that were honored, so sophomore Arshia Bhattachara and juniors Grace Su, Katie Fondon, Kate Kelly and Shrivis Arun, they also received special achievement recognition for their work. And we really want to make sure that we congratulate and thank Ms. Fondon and Mr. Holbrook for their leadership in that. I mean, they really are just constantly winning awards. It's quite impressive. And then the last thing I just wanted to say is that we are looking to organize a spring tour for the school committee, so I'm gonna share some dates with you this week. We'll kind of figure out what might work. The focus is going to be on sustainability. We want to try to do this in nice weather, so I'm gonna try to look and see what the Farmer's Almanac might say, if there's any, you know, give us a couple of weeks out to try to find a nice day when we could do it, but we'll all share that with you and then we can get that scheduled.
Thank you. School committee updates. Anyone like to spell?
Yeah. So Town DEI Committee met on April 30. We are still exploring and recruiting for a second student seat on the committee. We have passed word on to the Neshoba Valley Tech High School for a Westford student to join, possibly for the fall of '26. We know we're kind of wrapping up here for the school year, so that would be voted on here and at the Select Board, so, much like we did before for Kate Kelly. We had discussion about the Robinson feasibility study and the long-term implications of that study. I think there were a lot of questions that the committee had, and I think it's, you know, the order for us to really articulate what are those phases and the communication, what that sort of timeline is, and be able to spread that out through other committees in town. You know, the last larger question they had, very, very broad question, you know, what does equity mean across the district and how do we enrich it? So we're gonna listen, obviously, to some of the first six school improvement plans of our elementary principals and how they're gonna target equity objectives through the AIR recommendations and some of the school-based teams. So I think, you know, we as a committee can work to further that work and the communication and outreach, so.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else have something to add?
I'll just give an update, now that Sean is not our official CPAC liaison. CPAC met this week, of which they'll be coming to the rest of us, I think, the next meeting or the one after?
June 9th.
Yep. To review their survey results and create their slides and recommendations, but just to let people know that they are planning a night, to keep an eye out on the Facebook page, but they're planning a kind of a CPAC night out, June 11th, I believe, location to BD.
Okay. Great. I was gonna add, I don't think Maddie mentioned this, but the Financial Literacy Fair?
Oh, right. Oh, my gosh. Zombie's gonna have my head. That is happening.
So I think this originally started with the Student Senate?
Yes.
And they have partnered with the Rotary Club. There is a youth financial literacy fair scheduled for Monday, June 2nd. I think it's part of Senior Week, right? And they're looking for volunteers, so you can sign up to help either the 9 to 11 a.m. shift or the 11:45 to 1:45 p.m. shift. That's Monday, June 2nd. I think you can reach out to, to sign up as a volunteer, please send an email to one of the following addresses: westfordrotaryclub@gmail.com or gulshank, G-U-L-S-H-A-N-K at AOL.com or 26G-H-I-N-K-L-E at westfordk12.us. Or me, and I'll forward that. Or that information along. I think I had another thought, but it's gone. Oh, I went to Parkerville for the first time.
Oh.
With my third grader, and that was great. I had never, you know, you can, sometimes they open it up to the parents to like stop by during lunch, depending on the teacher and depending on the class, depending on the weather, but this was the first time I had gotten to Chaperone. Of course, I volunteered to Chaperone before I realized that you have to dress up at Chaperone.
You did a good job.
So, but it was great. Like, the school marms, I think is the term they use, like runs through the history lessons and like the kids really enjoy trying with like the ink pot to like write the letter home, and it's just a really cool immersive experience, so I was glad I got that chance. And I will echo the applause for Six. If everyone had a chance to see it, hopefully, at WA, it was just mind-blowing beyond words. I continue to sit there reminding myself, this is live music, these are high school students. I mean, it just continues to impress. And I also was lucky enough to see the Blanchard Music Middle School did The Lion, the Witch and the Wardrobe. Thank you. And that was also very well done. And I like to see the middle school ones, that you can hopefully see familiar names start showing up at WA in a couple of years. That's it. Any last call for updates?
I would just second the live music. You know, I know that that is not something that all the high schools in the state have, and it is a phenomenal program to have that ability, not only performing with live music, but having the live musicians.
Right. Yep. And sorry, one last one would just be to echo what was said in public comment, which is thank you, welcome to Shayna and Jess as your first meeting, and we hope that you enjoy your term.
Don't have any regrets.
Yeah. So next, we have a little bit on the agenda for recognitions. We were hoping Daniel could join us tonight, but we understand this is busy time for spring, in the spring for seniors. I had a couple remarks?
You go first.
Okay. And I wrote them down because I'm really bad at this.
Annoying story.
I just wanted to point out, like, that not every teenager signs up to spend their evenings listening to budget discussions and policy debates. And I think both you and Daniel have continued to show up this year with respect and consistency, even while managing the demands of senior year. And I hope that these meetings have given you a little insight into how school decisions are made and maybe sparked interest in civic life beyond high school. And I just think overall, I love having the student representatives to remind us about the engaged thoughtful citizenship that we hope to foster in all of our students, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maddie. Thank you.
I would just like to add that I've had the joy and privilege of knowing both of you for a long time. And so it's been very surreal to have you as the senior representatives here now, because our journey started so much long ago when you were in middle school. And you have done an incredible job. We appreciate your advocacy. You've never shied away, neither one of you have ever shied away from speaking up and adding context, which I think is really what this work is about, and so it's been well-received and we appreciate it and we respect it. And I would agree with what Valerie just said. I hope that it is a springboard for your continued advocacy in whatever form that that takes, and we wish you all of the best as you move on.
Thank you. It's been fascinating. It's been a great opportunity, and I feel like I've learned so much, and I'm, you know, excited to graduate but sad to leave.
Yeah.
Excited for, you know, whoever else sits next year to get this opportunity. Thank you.
Well, we have something for you. It might help you be less. So that you can have some downtime.
Yeah.
And fun.
Do you expect pictures from your dorm room of you playing?
Yeah, yeah, yes, please.
Just at home, too.
Make friends.
It doesn't make it to school, that's okay.
Oh, I love it. Thank you, guys. This is really cool.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Everybody ready for some business?
I just wanted to echo that Six was amazing, and I went to congratulate the cast, the crew, the director, everyone who was involved, all the musicians. And I did see it in Boston a couple of years ago, and it definitely rivaled that performance. It probably was my favorite, so congratulations again. And also to The Lion, the Witch and the Wardrobe cast, crew and director. They do an amazing job, not only performing, but also creating a wonderful community that's very supportive for the students. And the VPA show was incredible, the VPA art show, there was over 1,400 pieces of art from all of the schools. It was incredible and amazing, so congratulations to everyone.
Great. Auditions, thank you, Lori. Final call. Okay. We're gonna move on to elementary school improvement plans. Why don't we start with the KATA 2? And we'll bring up one of them. And we will welcome our KATA 2 principals to the microphone.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity this evening for us to be able to review the progress that we've made towards our school improvement plans this year, as well as the goals and objectives that we have moving forward for next year. I think, you know, throughout the year, we always do take the opportunity to review the progress that's being made, but sometimes when you sit back and collaboratively look at all that has been accomplished and then all that we need to continue doing moving forward, it just can be reassuring for the work that you've been doing. I'd like to just welcome our newest members of the school committee. Well, I'd also like to recommend that Westphalopoly become a retirement president. All exiting employees. A nice piece. I got to start off first tonight with taking a look at the pre-KATA 2 Goal One, part of our school improvement plan. And like the superintendent, we decided to make sure that we organized it in a similar manner to make sure that there was consistency, not only across what he has done for work and reporting out on, but make it easier for all of you as well. I think we found the exercise to be helpful and easier to be able to delineate how things were set up from the beginning of the year and moving onward. I chose to talk a little bit about the progress that was made with the implementation of the new IEP. I think it was a huge undertaking for our staff to be able to implement a, really, a brand-new format of a brand-new document and try to be able to understand what that looks like. When we talk about individual education plans, we really talk about them being individualized for the person sitting in front of you. And so to take that same thought process and then try to individualize a brand-new document with parts that we weren't really always sure of, and what it meant, having to talk with one another, made it daunting. But I always say that through a brand-new rollout of anything, there's a lot that you can learn and reflect on, and I'm really proud of our entire special education staff for the work that they've done in looking through that. And then adding to the fact that it was a brand-new IEP, we added brand-new software, too. And as you all know, technology doesn't always work as it's intended to do. Like to take the opportunity to just to thank Gerard Coughlin for just helping to arrange additional support sessions for our staff through professional development, but there's still a lot of work to do, and that has certainly been highlighted for next year. Rather than me talk about what's planned for next year on the IEP, I figured I would touch upon just a separate initiative, if that's okay with all of you. One of the things that we've been looking at for a while now is the MTS S model, especially through the lens of the implementation of the EL curriculum, and just really making sure also that we're removing any barriers to any new curriculum that we have in place, especially also making sure that we're not being redundant with the work that's being done, both in a, you know, a program like EL versus content that we also have to touch upon. EL is a pretty content-heavy based program, which is great, makes it more authentic. So really kind of delving in deep to look at each individual part within EL. And while we've done a lot of great work and we've had some building-based professional development meetings on, you know, on these types of things, for next year, we're looking to build upon the UDL model. That's Universal Design Learning. This year, we spent time talking about engagement and what that really looks like. I've said for a while, and it's probably like a broken record, but, excuse me, engagement's not complacency or compliant work, which we oftentimes see from our students, are so eager to perform, but really it is truly engaged in the curriculum and instruction that takes place before them. And so I really feel like we grew a lot as administrative staff, looking at the engagement part of UDL. Again, peeling back that onion, coming together, developing a survey as a way for us to calibrate our own understanding as an administrative team of what engagement would look like, and then afterwards, bringing that to our staff to really have them take a closer look at engagement and almost reflect on their own practices to be able to determine where it is that we might be able to do a better job. Moving forward into next year, what will be new is that we're gonna really start to explore a little bit more the representation and the action expression portions of the UDL framework, so I imagine that it's gonna look somewhat similar to what we've done with engagement. We'll talk a little bit more at admin in the summer retreat, and then probably start to slowly roll out aspects of those portions to our staff so they have a greater understanding and we can really look at what equity means in the work that we do each and every day. And then, because I feel like I'm rambling at this point, you know, a few things that we have also done are just to implement the new IST form. It's really more of a revamping of the IST form. That's the Instructional Support Team form, where teachers, before bringing a student who they might have some questions or concerns about, would fill that out, be able to give the entire team a little bit more information and context as to where the struggles lie, and then also how we might be able to provide some additional input on interventions that we want to put into place for Tier One and Tier Two. And then, of course, we always want to take a look at what our tiered response for intervention looks like every year regardless. This year, we are losing some reading intervention staff, so we want to make sure that we look at that one more time to make sure that we are truly doing the best to meet the needs of all of our students, you know, with the Tier One, Tier Two and Three interventions that we're lucky enough to still have in place. And that's all I ask.
Do you guys want questions as we go or at the end?
It probably makes sense to do. Yeah, okay. At the end, sure. At the end. I was gonna say by goal, but those two, I'm outnumbered, so.
All right. So I'm gonna talk to you tonight about Goal Number Two, which is to improve curriculum implementation and assessment systems so that every child continues to access high-quality instruction. And one of the initiatives that has been a key focus this year was through curriculum analysis, identify math standards that need to be supplemented beyond the provided curriculum. So we've made some really great gains and progress this year. There's, they've developed a Looking at Student Work Protocol, an LASW, to support structured conversations around student work and inform instructional decisions. There was a Westford University course that was offered, and the goal of this was to deepen teacher understanding, place value concepts, all the way from early counting to fractions and decimals. There was also collaboration done with teachers, administrators and staff to design a clearer, more detailed rubric for the standards of math practice. And if you're not sure what those are, and I had to refresh my teacher brain on that, that those are the guide to... that those are the guide to creating a more complex learning experience for our students that, so they can apply it to everyday life, right? It's not just about what happens in the classroom. And some of those are, I'm not gonna read them all because there are eight, but making sense of problems and persevering and solving them, modeling with math, using appropriate tools strategically, some of those higher-level thinking skills. So, and then we also, the rubric, we talked about designing a clearer, more detailed rubric for the standards of math practice, and then that rubric will improve the standards-based report card for next year. We also had professional learning related to math practice standards that occurred this year. Moving forward, next year, our action plan is to start really using that Looking at Student Work Protocol. And that will happen at our curriculum meetings, we'll examine student work, we'll collaborate, and we'll make sure that they are calibrated with our expectations across classrooms. Another part of this is to identify and provide professional learning opportunities in math to support instructional growth. And then we hope to continue offering University of Westford courses to strengthen mathematical knowledge and instructional strategies.
All right, and I have Goal Three. I'm Melissa Boylan, Principal Miller. So Goal Three is to maintain a healthy and supportive school environment that meets the social, emotional, and health and wellness needs of our youngest learners through the direct teaching of social, emotional, and physical well-being. So I'm gonna give kind of two quick updates because we're kind of merging them out, and then I'll talk about kind of an action plan for different ones. So, you know, we had in here, identify and analyze what can be removed from the calendars and schedules at the school level while maintaining high expectations and standards. And for us, that both looks at student and staff. And I think we've really started to embed that in our decision-making process in whatever we do. So for example, if we're coming up on a staff meeting or a curriculum meeting, and we're like, oh, is there, you know, anything urgent or on our, you know, that we have to, or could this be an email? We're sending the email and we're giving team time to really kind of look at UDL or work together as we're navigating the EL curriculum. And I just think, you know, as far as an action plan, there's not a lot of specifics that I can predict for this coming year of how I can, how we can alleviate things from either our staff and students. But we just want you to know that, you know, we know that they have a lot on their plate. You know, one of the nice things at pre-KDA two moving forward this year is there's not a new curriculum, which seems to happen every year, so we can dig a little bit deeper, give some more time and coaching for those pieces. So while there's not a real action plan moving forward, we just want you to know that it's really embedded in our decision-making as we look at different aspects. And then the other piece that fell under this was to grow our school-based equity team, and we've made some progress with that, but we really wanted to merge it with our Equity Audit Initiative because we really feel like that comes into play. So you'll see that those two for the action plan, so I wanted to highlight that. And then I think in regards to talking about where we're going, I think there's probably questions around more of that health and wellness piece, so I figured that might be a good one to highlight. So as we look at the new health and wellness standards and what we know about students, especially our youngest learners, we've, we analyze the schedule, and I say "we," but that's all of us, pre-KDA five. Really looking at how we could kind of embed more of that time. So as we move forward to next year, we are planning on having two PE/Wellness classes a week for our youngest learners. What that looks like is our rotation. So if you're familiar with the elementary schedule, one of our specials weekly is our trimester rotation. So one of those is health, one of those is spirit at the pre-KDA two level, and one is innovation lab. So we plan on, for health, it's already taken care of because that's gonna be embedded in. Spirit, we're really focusing on how we're gonna introduce that to our kindergarten students because they're the ones that it's really new for. And then use a lot of our community meeting times to really reinforce those core values that have, we've, as, if we look at the progression of school improvement plans, you know, it went from, you know, classrooms to whole schools to after-school programs. So we've really focused a lot on being able to extend our spirit for that. So now, you know, we're working to how we bring it into our new students, but we can really reinforce that during community meetings and other times that we have whole work, group work. And then the library, you know, there isn't like standards for the library, so our librarians are really gonna work on bringing pieces of innovation lab to library time, along with pieces of spirit and the books that we read. So we won't lose either of those pieces, but we will be able to better address the new frameworks for PE and health. So that's where we're at with Goal Three. So now we'll take questions.
Great, great, thank you.
So is the increase in wellness classes, is that being driven by the new standards?
Yeah, so, and Brian could probably speak better to this, but there's been, the new well, health and wellness standards are much more in-depth. And so a trimester rotation of once a week really wouldn't allow us to cover those standards effectively. And so adding, you know, there'll be movement pieces, and we're still kind of working out the design, but, you know, it's not gonna be one health class and one PE class, it's gonna be kind of a combination. And within the new updated frameworks or health standards, it also looks at, it's not just physical health, it's, you know, emotional health, and so there'll be, you know, pieces of that embedded as well in those lessons. So in order to be able to kind of teach those, you know, look at a trimester rotation just isn't long enough to cover what we need to cover.
And also, it will provide them with it throughout the entire year, right? Like, we're not just addressing this for a trimester, this is part of our year-long work together.
And when you say the trimester, you're talking about the health class specifically, right? That was what was rotating?
Yes, that was one trimester.
We operate on a trimester, so we do three or four cards that way.
Thanks Lori.
Out of clarity, what is University of Westford? It's the first time I've seen that term, so.
So we offer professional development here at school. It's taught by, you know, experts within our district. So for example, you know, Julie Kelly, one of our curriculum coordinators, could offer a course for PDPs that's housed here in Westford, taught by Westford. And it really, it's nice compared to some of, you know, the PDs that you go to because it's relatable and it directly is based on what we do. So we offer a variety and a variety of kind of topics throughout the year, they change. I attended a really great one.
Any staff member or administrator can offer a course, and then they would bring it to us with the syllabus and what the expectations are. There's a clear guideline around whether it would be one credit, two credit, three credit. And any of those credits would allow our staff members to move along the scale. So, which the ones that were provided this year, we're very happy with. And really feel like we get a kind of a better bang for your buck in terms of, like Melissa said, something that's really tied into the curriculum and what we're trying to roll out, as well as we have two teachers from the day school who annually will offer the Mentor-Mentee Program. And so this year, we had an additional five or six staff members that signed up for that. And that's pretty important for our program.
It's nice, too, is it empowers teacher leadership, right? It's a nice way.
I had a quick clarifying question on the Trial Wayfinder program.
Oh, yeah.
Could you explain that?
Sure. So Miller School and Day School, so we've been using Panorama for a long time. However, at the early ages, we're looking for more. You know, Panorama, what it offers as far as lessons and pieces, we wanted to see what else was out there. And so Gerard did some research, and so Miller and Day School have been trialing Wayfinder. It is fantastic in that, well, it's fantastic for a few reasons. But one is, it gives you lessons sorted by grade level, Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, right? So it's not the same lesson that kids are getting year after year, right? We can really fine-tune it. There, not only is it sorted that way, it's very low-planning. So there's activities that you can just take and use in your morning meeting, five minutes, no, you know, really nothing extra. And then there's real lessons that a teacher could be like, oh, my class has been really struggling with, whatever. Look it up, they have an editable slide deck, you can pull that up. The teacher can choose to kind of personalize it to their own, and it's all set, and you can use it. So our teachers have found it very user-friendly. Our counselors are loving it because they're using some of the Tier Two and Tier Three resources in their groups. And it also has a great anti-bullying kind of program. And you'll see, even though I didn't highlight that, you know, initiative here, we are really working to kind of calibrate our social, emotional supports across the pre-KDA five schools. And, you know, it shouldn't matter kind of what school year, and we wanna make sure that, you know, we're working on those Castle Five core competencies and making sure that we're touching upon those and really building on that. So Wayfinder is a trial. We, we still have a little bit left to go. We have a meeting with Gerard in a little while, not tonight, but. And then there's that, like the survey, we haven't piloted the survey part yet, just the lessons.
Do you see a next step if that goes, continues to go well?
I mean, if I had my way, we would.
We'd all have.
We would start, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a question as to which, which of these two things do we prefer?
There's also a screening tool that you can use to gather information about that teachers would, I believe, fill out. And we would get information to see, do they need more support? And that's how they would qualify for Tier Two or Tier Three. And then there's a home component as well, that families can be aware of. And it's just that common language, right, across KDA five? And I actually believe it goes to E. So something else to look into.
Thank you.
Can you touch on another point there? I see in a couple of plans about the School-Based Equity Committee, and I know that there were some family surveys that were sent out, any good info from those?
Yep, so, I'll talk about mine, then you can talk about yours. So Chris Ardell and I, we wanted to kind of see sister schools-wise. And for us, it was really, as you know, we have a high ELL population, a high Asian population within our building. So we really wanted to make sure our sense of belonging. And I think it might have come up previously, but for us, we, we don't wanna necessarily take away, you know, like celebrations or things, but we wanna make sure that everyone feels welcome and we're honoring what is important to honor. And so that was really the focus of our, of our survey. And the great part is, is that, you know, ninety-nine percent of the people were happy and felt that, you know, we were inclusive and things were going, you know, well, and even if they celebrated different things, or, you know, they felt that it was, even if they, let me change that. If they, oh, sorry. If, no, I thought you were talking to me, whispering an answer. Let's say like they didn't celebrate Halloween, right? But we have a big PTO Halloween festival. We wanted to make sure that we weren't, that wasn't offensive to them, or they didn't feel like they couldn't, and they didn't. And that was what was important to us. We just wanna make sure that all of our families, you know, feel welcome and that before we start taking more away from the kids, that, that we wanted to make sure we had that data point, that it wasn't impacting anyone negatively. And we can share that out eventually, it's not ready to be shared out yet.
I just think it's, any, anytime we can hear, you know, like that the families are responding directly to your feedback, that.
Yeah, great.
Just data points we, I love to see.
Yes, we also, sorry, I could talk all day about this, so I won't. We also included things like family, like cultural traditions and things that they like to do, and after-school activities, it just gave us some information on what their days look like and things like that. So once it's ready to share out, I'm happy to share it out with everybody, I haven't crunched, you know, in a pretty way. There's no, it's not like CPAC with all their charts and graphs.
Melissa, actually, I'm just curious, did that survey also look, because I know you have like a medically fragile population as well, so did the kind of, the questions encompass that group as well?
Absolutely, yes, it was, it was from a variety of perspectives, so.
I do have just two points or two questions. On that Goal Three, actually Melissa, you were talking about, you know, we're talking about identifying, identify and analyzing what can be removed from calendars, and you're saying like it's been embedded into your decision-making. Has there been any engagement with staff in terms of surveys or conversations about, you know, anything tangible that can be removed as opposed, you know, because I think when we came into this, we already had overloaded and overstressed and overworked staff. So I really appreciate the mindset change moving forward. But has there been any kind of feedback from staff on, you know what, Melissa, we'd love if you took a look at this, or, you know?
Yeah, I think there's open communication, I would say, you know. And obviously, if I, I try to think through this lens all the time, if I put something out there, and then, you know, they're like, "Oh, hey," I hear about it, in a very nice way. So I think it's a kind of a balance. You know, I think, it's hard to say, oh, this can be taken off your plate, and this can be taken off your plate. It's more of what other things we can do to support. You know, I think, again, for kindergarten screenings, that was huge, not having school for our incoming kindergartners. It takes away sub-plans, it takes away scheduling, you know, location, trying to find spaces for these teachers to work in. That is just an easy one that I can come up with on the top of, off the top of my head. You know, I think even as we're navigating new curriculum, providing them time to work in grade-level groups, to talk and troubleshoot, that they have reported to be helpful. And in my air equity audit meeting, I clearly heard that we don't have enough time for that. So, you know, so like, looking at those mindset pieces, I think is really important. You know, and it's hard to come up with like those tangible pieces, and we know our teachers are hardworking and they wear a lot of hats. So just trying to find the support and time has been kind of a priority.
I just had one other thing to note as opposed to a question, and it's something that's been on my mind, and I think I've said it to a number of various meetings, and it's kind of through KDA five. I see this year, you're looking at kind of revising and potentially revamping the report cards. And one of the things I've always thought is that it would be great if we could look at, is there a way we can include like a small paragraph, a couple of sentences about each student? We talk about, you know, being a holistic, you know, whole-child kind of district. And I feel when we get the report cards, everything's reduced down to a number. There's nothing personable about your kid shown in that report card. And it's usually very like academic or skill-based, so it's just something that I would kind of throw out there that maybe you might keep in mind is, how can we put more of who the child actually is and how they're doing in that report card so that they're not just a number?
Appreciate that feedback very much.
Yeah, I had a quick question, and I just wanted to say thank you for all your work on this. It's clearly a lot of very thoughtful, effective initiatives that you all are working on. For the math curriculum, I was just curious the impetus for looking for the need for additional supports, whether that was staff-driven, or that's a regular part of your process, or there were student gaps that you were trying to solve?
Sure, so Dr. Kelly does a lot of that work with our staff, and she actually pulls together Task Force, and then they do it, it's volunteer work based on that. There are definitely areas and pockets, everyday math has been here a while now, since before me, and I couldn't tell you how many years, but we are definitely, we've included a lot of the Cathy Richardson math at the lower levels, and that's a nice Tier Two support that we can give to our students. But just thinking about that and getting manipulatives in their hands and those sorts of things are always on the forefront. And Julie heads that for us, Dr. Kelly, so we're very fortunate to have her.
I'll probably give like a tangible example, too. So for example, in the Geometry Unit of Kindergarten, right, it's identifying shapes. Our students are really good at that, but when we looked at the data for students, like being able to identify shapes, like in different perspectives, orientation, that, it was, it was a struggle, even after teaching, you know, the curriculum. So we look at the, those, that data, and we're like, all right, this is something across schools and grade level that the students didn't do as great on. So it wasn't just like a Miller thing, like we didn't teach it well or something, it was, you know, it's noticeable. So then, as a team, Nina, Kevin, myself, Julie, whoever, kind of look, and the teachers, look at how we can supplement that. One, an easy solution to that was magnet tiles. So now we're building things with magnet tiles, and they're able to kind of look at the shapes in different ways. But we're adding some pieces to it to make sure that everyone is learning what they're supposed to be learning.
Great. More questions?
Could I ask, just to follow up on that, like additional slide at the end that you guys have, to speak a little bit more towards the collaborative problem-solving, how that's been going, and what you are kind of envisioning for building and understanding? Is that with families, is that more staff-based?
That's a great question. As you may recall, the administrative team, along with a number of other volunteers from each of the buildings, went through that first tier of training. And then from there, there was a smaller team that went through a much more comprehensive two-fold days of training of how to implement collaborative problem-solving. two-fold days, um, of, of training of, of how to implement collaborative problem solving. Uh, from there, uh, some of us met with just building-based team members to talk a little bit more about our own understanding of it. Two days is a long time to, to sit through and, and try to, um, process everything. So making sure we're all on the same page or a similar page, um, with that. And then what we've done this year, and correct me if I'm, I'm speaking just for one of our schools, but I do believe it's, it's more than one, um, is we've all been sort of implementing it individually, um, as we've been a part of that team and trained with the goal that next year we will roll it out to our, our staff. And so that's actually one of our homework assignments over the summer as a leadership team, is to come together and talk about how we roll that professional development out and then to make sure that our approach with solving problems, uh, with kids is, um, you know, in fact, collaborative, so.
And at our ed camps, um, we did have a, a follow-up kind of group for those that did the, the, um, level one training. Um, so we were able to kind of really list kind of some action items, um, and some barriers, um, that might come into play to, to roll that out. I think, um, like Kevin had said, rolling it out, um, to our schools in a way that, you know, this is a trademarked piece, so we're not trainers, right? But really embedding those philosophies, um, and understanding the why. Um, we talked a little bit about sometimes, uh, you know, uh, let me take a step back. We talked about being proactive, right? So if you have a student that is having a couple of office referrals, we want to do a proactive Plan B, um, which is really the collaborative piece and not having it be in reaction. Um, so we talked about like, how can we set aside time? What does that look like? How can we support each other in that? Um, but really being able for staff to understand the philosophy, because sometimes it feels uncomfortable if a child's not walking away with a consequence, because we've come up with a solution to that problem. So really embedding that piece and not the one-size-fits-all, um, piece.
Anecdote, there was a, a minor, um, incident and I thought, oh, this is my opportunity. Tried the collaborative problem solving.
Not to get too excited.
Ready? Um, you know, and, uh, the children in front of me were having a consistent problem. And so I said, you know, you've been having of this consistent problem. We, we need to figure this out together and, you know, what should we do? Uh, and they immediately came up with, we should probably be in different classes. Which will happen at least. And I said, well, I don't know if that's gonna be fair to, you know, Mrs. Boylan's class, like they've got a whole thing going on. Um, this was just a few weeks ago. And then, um, they said, oof, different schools. The other child said, my mom's not gonna like. That's just a piece of what that could look like at the pre-K to two. But, um, we're gonna, we're gonna keep striving.
Yeah.
Like, I know that, um, there's been, um, uh, there's that, um, self-paced course that's been in the newsletters, as must be as, as part of our package. Um, and then I, I had heard feedback about, um, positive feedback about at the kindergarten orientation, I think at NAB, was there a little slideshow about CPS? So I feel like it's, the message is making its way out to families. And one thing I sort of anecdotally hear, whether from staff or families, is, is this hesitation that CPS does remove this idea of a consequence. And when, when the, when we know that behaviors are so dysregulated and that is a major thing that is on teachers' plate, that like they can't get through their lesson because of this, or, or feeling burnt out because this student is repetitive, repetitively doing that. So I was just wondering how you could stick to like.
Yeah, great question. So I think two important pieces of that is, um, you know, a Plan B or the collaborative piece is for those, you know, repeat offenders, specific kind of pieces. Ninety, ninety to ninety-five percent of the time, you're a Plan A, you're enforcing the rules, right? The other piece of that is so embedded in CPS is a child will do well if they can, right? So similar to someone that might need extra support in reading or writing, we've identified the student as having lagging skills and needs extra support to be able to kind of meet those expectations in the classroom. So it's not every stu-, you know, every student we're not gonna meet and be like, oh, you're running in the halls, let's talk about a plan so you don't run tomorrow. Like, that's really not what it is. It's for those, you know, special circumstances where a child is struggling because of a lack of skill to be able to work through it. And it, you know, the, it's, it's not an every student, every day type of, of piece. It's really for those kids with those significant lagging skills that we need to work harder to support, just like we would support our reading or math.
Which is an appropriate place for that to come up, sometimes in our IST meetings, quite a lot.
And I think once we get on the same page with this district-wide, that's just gonna be something we can take off teachers' plates, right? Because behavior is such a challenge. We're seeing a rise in it where their bodies are moving and what can we, what approach can we take that is universal, that is empowering teachers to have the tools that they need? And I, I do believe this will get us there.
Right, great. Any final thoughts on the K to two? Do you want to save the vote to be K to five or vote K to two and then three to five?
You could approve ours in case you don't approve theirs.
We don't want to leave them hanging.
I'll take, I'll take a motion to approve the Nebnassett, Robinson and Miller School Improvement Plans for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six.
So moved on the motion.
Thank you. And Lori was the second? Okay. Any last discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
There you go. Pass the flying colors, Melissa.
All right.
Ms. Cannelli had, uh, an emergency, so she's not allowed to be with us tonight. But her colleagues are.
Step it up.
So first thing, next year, three through five, we'll be going first.
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I was just gonna say, this could go a little faster in that we've had some of those, some of those. Cause, cause we know, and a reflection is the vertical and horizontal alignment. And so it, it, it's possible you might want to stay second. Go ahead, take it away, thank you.
So I'll start first, I'm with Pete Myers and Prince of Abbott, and this is Chris Sedella from, uh, Overday, and Sharon Cannelli couldn't make it tonight, so will be presenting tonight. So, um, very slimmer, similar to, um, K through two, um, with, with goal one. Um, Kevin did a fantastic job, so, um, I can't add much to it. A lot of this year, we talked again about the Equity Audit, so we're gonna have, um, teams at the school-based. Um, I think we, I think the district just finished up our interviews with Maddie from, um, the audit, I forget her last name. And so now we've been putting our plans together and next year we're working on those plans, um, for the different schools. And then quite a bit of work went into the new IEPs this year. I know the APs did a fabulous job working together and putting the new IPs together along with Paro School, so, it, it, but they managed it. It wasn't too easy, but they did a wonderful job and they'll keep on going for next year as well. Um, and again, um, Kevin, you did fabulous, I don't know what to say.
See, see you like seconds.
But again, it was this year, just the Equity Audit and working on the IEPs and updating that, so.
Great.
Pretty much for goal one.
Thanks.
Okay, so goal two is about improving curriculum implementation and assessment systems. And as you know, one of the school district priorities is universal design for learning. Um, and that's something that we have been talking about in professional development opportunities at curriculum meetings. And the good news is, um, UDL is already alive and well in our classrooms. And we were able to have some really robust conversations surrounding that. And I think you may have had discussions about this already, but we had done, um, some look-for's in the classroom. And so we were looking at various categories. For example, optimizing individual choice and autonomy. And so teachers had, um, collaborative conversations, uh, to talk about what that might look like. So for example, um, as you know, uh, at the, um, elementary level, we now have a new ELA curriculum, um, which is consistent across, uh, K through five. And, um, because of that, it doesn't necessarily offer as much choice as they may have had in previous iterations of our ELA program. But the good thing is, teachers are able to stamp their own autonomy by offering things like literature circles at the grade five level. And that gives children an opportunity to choose books that they would like to read. Um, and other ways of doing this could be like using Book Creator in which students can decide how they would like to present their information. Um, those are just two of the many bullets that we came up with and I'm certainly not going to read all of them to you. But, um, as you can see, it's something that is really important to our teachers and we know that it is happening. Um, an example of minimizing threats and distractions, which is also important to engagement. Um, we cited, uh, the fact that we are now piloting that SEL program called Wayfinder in the classroom. And at day school, we're also using the ADL lessons. Um, so those are examples of how engagement is already happening, um, at that level. Okay. Um, additionally, and I think it was already mentioned at pre-K to two, but we did, um, do a lot of work with our IST form to make sure that it was consistent across grade levels. And at the three to five level, it's a really robust process, because we want to make sure that we're analyzing data, which includes DIBELS, which is looking at oral fluency and accuracy. Um, the MCAS data, which obviously starts at grade three, um, including ELA and math, and then looking at those, uh, student growth, uh, percentiles. And then additionally, we use the I-Ready Diagnostic for math in looking at areas like numbers and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement and geometry. Um, and this allows us to have a conversation about how students are doing with tier one instruction in the classroom. And then to have conversations about whether or not they need more, um, consistent support and perhaps move them into tier two or tier three. I have to be candid that there are teachers who are a little bit wary of the fact that we're reducing the number of interventionists, um, and that our class sizes, they're perceived to get larger, in some cases they are absolutely happening. And that's why this IST process is so important, that teachers are involved in having these discussions. And not just presenting the data, but what is the instructional improvement that is going to happen as a result of that? And how can it happen within the classroom? Without additional staff members. And the nice thing is, with the targeted areas of assistance, we now have a whole section about whether or not the intervention is working. So that, um, conversation is collaborative and ongoing to support students.
Okay. All right. So moving on to goal three, uh, to maintain a healthy and supportive school environment that meets the social, emotional health and wellness needs of our learners and our staff. So I know Melissa talked quite a bit about, you know, what can we take off their plate to make it, you know, for them to help them? And that's just, it, it's really hard. In, in, in the world of education, it's not what we think about, to be honest with you. I mean, what our job is to work with our students and if things aren't going right, we, we find things to help. Um, and it always seems that we're adding, adding. And what we can do is we're gonna add, but what can we just slow down? So for instance, in our EL program, um, we adopted, you know, we started it last year and we keep on reminding you, it's gonna be three to five years, so we're not rushing them. And you keep on saying it, now I think they believe it, cause we're not rushing them. Same thing with the UDL, this year we just looked at engagement, okay? And Dr. Hughes has said many times, it's, you know, five to six years as well. So those are the kind of things, we're not taking things off their plate, but if we do it in a slower manner, I think that takes a little stress off them, so. So we're always looking for that. Um, another one we talk about is, um, collaborative, um, I'm sorry, it was their staff meetings in our, our, our curriculum. We've really changed that up these last couple of years, as Melissa said, um, very frequently we, we see our agendas and what the teachers can work on, or we have a curriculum and say, everyone together, it's okay, you don't even come down, meet with your grade levels. And they do a wonderful job, when you give them the time, you give them an hour, hour and a half, just to work on their own. And you walk through the classrooms and they're working on things that's important for them. And it makes such a difference when, when they're doing something they really need to do for themselves. A third grade team may do something totally different than the fifth grade team, that's okay. That seems to work very well. And the last one we've worked pretty hard, very hard on, is implementing the PE twice a week, uh, for next year. Um, and I think this is an awesome move. Um, I think we know the kids need movement and to have it twice a week is great. Um, so this year, we, we were able to pilot at, at Abbott this year. And with TJ Elder, awesome PE teacher, what we started to do at the beginning of the year, he has his PE classes, his health classes in the gym, so we had a discussion, said, what if we took, you know, what, do you have any time at the end of your health classes? Cause he usually does. So what usually, what it turned out to be is, the health lesson would take about twenty-five, thirty minutes and to be in the, in the gym, and all the gyms in the district have, uh, big screens, so they can do lessons on that. So what it turned out to be is, he had the kids about thirteen weeks part of the rotation. The lesson would take twenty-five, thirty minutes, and then the kids knew after they did that, they'd have a, a lesson, a fun game, a PE lesson, um, kids can run around. So they were getting basically a chance to run around twice a week. And he was able to fit in the curriculum during that time. Um, so it worked out very well. So now we know it can be done. Especially next year, we're gonna have it twice a week. What I envision is probably PE, probably about a week and a half average out throughout the year, which is great. And he was able to review this with the other PE health teachers at our ed camp last week. And he went over exactly what his looked like. And teachers, and I, I, I was able to visit some of that meeting and teachers had some great ideas. And one teacher said, like in the fall and the spring, when the weather's great, could we maybe just, for those, for those two days, we take them outside? And I said, yeah, there's no reason, you have to, you'll have time to, to, um, to cover all the health standards. So use the freedom, and I think they liked having the freedom and the flexibility to, to fit it into how it works for them. And it may look a little different from K through, K to two, three through five, but that's fine. And then hopefully the communication among them just works and I, I think it's, it's a great idea for, for everyone involved. So that's, that's a big, um, and again, the schedule, Melissa Richard, AP over at Abbott did a fabulous job making sure all the schools that we could fit this into our schedule. And it did work. So thank you to her, for her work on that.
Okay, and finally, goal number four is about utilizing the Westford Climate Roadmap to increase sustainability initiatives within our school community. Um, so some of the things that we're working on, we have revamped our STEM Fair. Um, that's the great science and engineering fair that we've done for years and years at the grade three to five level. We are now calling it STEAM because we're adding the art, um, to that as well. And although it doesn't specifically focus on sustainability initiatives, there's a lot of room for improvement and growth in that area. There have been some of our young engineers that have been looking at that. So for example, um, during one of our STEAM, I keep saying STEM, but it's now STEAM, STEAM Fairs, um, one of the fifth graders, uh, decided that the day school parking lot needed to be redesigned because it's not large enough for the, um, cars to turn around. Actually, that is true. Had some, like, serious insight there, but the sustainability initiative is figuring out, what can we do to mitigate the problem of runoff into the nearby wetland? Um, which is Reed Brook. Um, so that was incorporated into that. We've also had projects that have, um, talked about rain gardens and things like that. So obviously adding those types of elements into the STEAM Fair is going to, um, also increase sustainability initiatives and get the kids involved as well. Um, so shout out to Jeff Goodwin, who's been working, um, across the district, um, to make the buildings more energy efficient. Um, and if anyone has ever been at the day school, it's either, the temperature can either be like the surface of the sun or it's Antarctic. And like one of the other, and so knowing this, um, he, um, spent a lot of time and probably money, um, most assuredly a lot of money went into this, but, uh, fixed all of our climate controls and the, um, what is, I don't know what the innards of all of the sixty-year-olds radiators are, but somehow he fixed all of that. And it's so much better now. And so I know that it's not perfect, um, it's a sixty-year-old aging building, but because the district is focused on that, it's really gonna be energy, more energy efficient. And we're not gonna have windows open with heat also going out the window at the same time. Um, we also know that, um, we're excited about our school garden program, particularly Nebnassett and the day school have received, uh, grants from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We're excited about our sixteen thousand dollar grant that we were, were granted for our school gar-, garden program. We were able to revamp, um, the, uh, current gardens that we have. Um, we now have eight plots out there and they're currently growing lettuce that they are going to actually use in the school cafeteria. And that, um, that initiative of going from, uh, the school garden to the cafeteria really speaks to sustainability for sure. And kids get a hands-on approach and they know where their food is coming from. And some of you who are veterans, uh, school committee members probably remember that our day school senate, maybe two years ago, did a presentation about our cafeteria offerings. I mean, as Melissa said, we have a very diverse population at the Miller and Day Schools. We realized that our cultural offerings were minimal at best. There's only. There's only so many chicken fingers and pieces of crunchers that you can eat. So we started offering on Thursdays in April and May, some more culturally attuned offerings. So just on Thursday last week, we had sweet potato and black bean stew, which was a Latin American flavor. And we have garden interns from Westford Academy that did some impromptu salsa dancing. So that was fun for the kids. Got a little bit out of control, though.
They came back pretty jazzed to class.
Fun. That was so fun. But the great thing is we were able to introduce some of the fresh herbs that are already growing in the garden. So they were able, some of the more adventurous kids put cilantro in their black bean and sweet potatoes too. But we've also had dishes that are attuned to our Indian cultures. And next week, we're offering falafel, which is a not too Middle East. So we're excited about all of that. And last but not least, the new ELA program, and specifically in third grade, is talking about global initiatives about water conservation, believe it or not. And they're so excited about that. So we're great, it's so great that we're able to choose a new curriculum that is also aligned to goal four. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, first questions? Tom?
Just something that stood out to me is what do you expect the mindful breaks for staff to, what do you envision those to be? That'll load the question for you.
I think whenever we can alleviate something from them, maybe not curriculum based, but what can we do? As you said, a staff meeting or just giving them extra time to do things instead of something needs to be into administration by next Friday, give them another week. Give them until after vacation, things like that. If they need a break during the day, have maybe cover for their class, just things like that. And just having the open conversation, if you need a break, you need a little, you know, time to collect yourself, that's fine. It's just given the opportunity that you can do that.
There were also options embedded in just the recent ed camp.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if you want to, were either one of you able to experience any of that?
Well, the ed camp, they did have, I think one of the offerings was yoga.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then I think the greatest thing about that was we gave them a long lunch period, which they could collect themselves, talk to their friends. And what was also nice, they don't get to see each other, like the elementary, we have six elementary schools, they don't get to see each other too often. Our PD days are pretty packed, usually three through five, you know, K through two. And then, so it was good to them to see each other. A lot of times you hear people, oh, I haven't seen you in a year and things like that. So it was just, it was a very relaxing day, put it that way, for a full curriculum day, which could be long. It went by really quick and really good feedback, just giving the freedom and not having, you know, and the offerings were only 45 minutes long. So it went really well. So that's a good suggestion.
I think it's important to remember those mindful breaks. I think there's a lot of focus on giving those, in having that space for the students, but the teachers have to be on for the entire time too.
Right.
Any other points, questions? Could you speak to the science advisory committee that was mentioned on the last slide?
Yep. So the science advisory committee, that is a committee led by Julie Kelly, our math and science curriculum leader. And they get together during the year to just talk about what's going on in science, science and social science.
It's indistinct.
Yeah, indistinct.
Yeah.
They're starting the process to explore a new K to E science curriculum. And so they're starting with conversations now to figure out, okay, what's working, what's, what are the concerns? And that's really a kick, because Joe Barnes is also helping with that at the six to eight level.
Okay, great.
And then Julie, Nina and I and some teachers went to a professional development opportunity offered by DESI to explore a curriculum called Open Sci Ed, which is inquiry based. It's one of many now that are fully vetted for that type of learning. And that's where science is going.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thanks. Could I ask one question on the PE?
Yep.
Peter, if you mind? And I think you've mentioned it before, but it might be just good to confirm it. We're able to do this across the schools without needing to increase PE staff?
We are increasing the PE position by one.
It's budget neutral.
It's budget neutral.
But it is an addition of one PE staff.
Across the six schools, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's budget neutral. Because the changes that they're making to the, basically the amount of support that was needed in the library.
Right.
Okay.
Because we're not going to have the research, we're not going to have the technology.
Yeah.
So now we have more.
Okay.
So we'll still have, so there's a reduction of some library ESPs.
Okay.
Not the librarian, not the LMS position, that'll still be supporting the library. But the idea of having really two sections of library that was covering different things, they're sort of saying that they're able to schedule that into be to one.
Yeah.
And that's where the additional time for PE is really coming from. And so there's, by rescheduling the current staff. Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
One clarification, just for people who are listening out there. Although we don't have separate technology courses or research, it's going to be embedded in the library.
Right.
So I wanted people to understand that we're not like getting rid of it.
No, right. Yeah, good point.
Yeah, so just to follow up on that, I would certainly encourage finding a way to kind of track that. Make sure that we are not removing a critical learning opportunity also from, from our students to supplement another critical area. So yeah, just want to make sure we don't have unintended consequences down the road.
And I would just, I was just going to open up the same sort of collaborative problem solving question I had for the K to twos, because three to five, obviously bigger kids, sometimes bigger behaviors. So I was just wondering how you have been seeing that roll out and if you've had any hesitancy from family or staff about the perception that CPS means less consequences?
We're just getting started, obviously, this year. So I know we're completing all the training next, at the end of this month with some of our teachers. We have four teachers in our administration we trained at the end of the year. And as we roll it out next year, as you know, we talked, K through two talked about, it's more problem solving than consequences.
Yeah.
Consequences are easy. You do this, you get that. But it's more deeper than that.
Sure.
And that's something we all have to work on for some of our students.
Okay. Thanks.
So on the contrary, I feel like the few opportunities that I've had to do some more robust collaborative problem solving, the families have been very grateful.
Okay.
Because they understand that this is a long-term solution. And it's not just give the aggressor a consequence and make sure they stay out of recess, but we're solving the problem for both parties.
Yes, right.
Going deeper.
Yeah.
Right. That's the whole point to this age, where educators, you know, these kids, we're teaching these kids.
It's proactive underneath.
I think it's like a perception problem.
Yeah.
Like I think we all, around the table, understand the value of it, but some people can hear that and think.
There's no consequences.
Correct.
It's not, it's a system. One piece of it is problem solving.
Yeah.
It's a continuum.
Yeah. Just overall, for both, both groups, I do look forward to seeing individualized targets of what we're going to be looking at for the air audit too. I see it noted on everyone's to work on what's been identified. I do look forward to seeing that as well and how you're going to address those, so.
Great. Good point. Thanks, Tom. Any other thoughts or motions?
Motion to approve the grades three to five school improvement plans.
Thank you. Second. Sorry, that was Bill and Catherine. Any last discussion? All those in favor? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we having anyone at the table for the handbook?
I believe so. Handbooks?
That's okay. Yep.
All right, so we updated.
They're all leaving, Melissa. Nina's there.
All right. So as you can see, we made some updates to the handbook. I mean, overall, we kind of softened some language to make it a little bit more developmentally appropriate. So for example, instead of, you know, cheating and plagiarism, we've changed it to academic integrity. Because really, you know, at this age, the kids are still learning what that means. You know, they're not copying from the internet on purpose to submit their paper. So really kind of focusing on that piece. We added a section around cell phones because, you know, I guess in case you didn't know, we have first graders and second graders bringing cell phones to school. So, you know, really kind of adding some more specificity around that. We updated the food services. It still had costs for meals, you know, some of those paperwork type things. We cleaned up some redundancies. There were still some half-day kindergarten references in there. So some of those updates just all kind of happened. We tried to look at it through like a parent perspective on some things. So the communication piece in the last email, in the last handbook was like a little rough. It almost was like, all right, you gear up your fight and come and talk to the teacher first and then reach out to the principal. And that wasn't how we want that to sound. So we kind of calmed that, made a little reference chart about, you know, who you can contact for what. And hopefully that will be a little bit more user friendly. We tried to be consistent with linking school committee policies. And they really worked before we submitted it. I know Courtney checked it. I checked them. And then there was a little snafu, but I think they're all back up, working. And we updated some of the ELL and 504 information just to reflect the most updated information. We did change the word report cards, it says, instead of progress reports. We really referenced now, progress reports is special education progress report. So just to make it less confusing, those are report cards that we do. We moved some of the 37H, like the more specific discipline things to the end. It's not really reader friendly, but you know, it's in there, but.
Or appendix.
Yes, yes. And then in the behavior piece, we did remove the levels. You'll still see like sample consequences or things that could happen. But I think as we take more of a UDL and collaborative problem solving lens, you know, we would get, I don't want to say stuck, but sometimes we'd be talking about behaviors and pieces. And for, you know, some, a level, for some students and their, their needs, a level three is more of a level one. And so when we're talking about consequences and pieces with families, it was kind of a rigidity point of what the level was. So this just kind of, we're looking at it through more of a UDL collaborative problem solving lens to kind of reduce some of those barriers.
And still thinking about logical consequences, right? If you write on a wall, you're helping to clean up what happened on the wall. And just, we were talking, just as administrators, and you know, there, it's hard to be consistent amongst those levels when you're tied to them. So how do we sort of come from this restorative practices approach, collaborative problem solving and sort of meld it all? And that those are, that will be the work that we continue to do.
I appreciate that explanation. It was one of the questions I had had, so I think that's really helpful.
And just thank you to Courtney for spearheading it.
Yeah.
She really helped us get organized. In a month of chaos, it was.
That was a big project, because I know that some of the school DEI group had looked at them last year. And yeah, it was, that was a big project.
Tried to remove some language, make it a little bit more user friendly. Any questions?
I was going to offer, so I know, first page, I see the translation. If you need this translated copy and paste in a Google Translate, I know there's a lot of parents that could do that. I'm wondering, and maybe this is an IT district potential solution, just like Westford Public Schools has the powered by Google select language up top. Maybe there's a way that we can incorporate that into the website and have a full handbook available. And we can do that in the website. The problem is that this is a PDF. And so the PDF, so, but I think if, as we explore it, the ability to do that, I would agree. I think it would just be more accessible and easier to digest for our families than one.
That was actually something I also had noted. We had on our previous handbooks put together a, and it was standard, it was supposed to be standard across K through 12 handbooks, a translations page that had all the official languages that were spoken in Westford or that we required translation. So I'm wondering, would we consider just putting that page back in? We had worked a lot with Amy Bailey on that and McGauley to kind of just have that one page with each line in each specific language saying about the translations page.
I think one of the concerns with it is that it's not exhaust, it's not, like, it's not an official list. Right? It is, and so we're trying to, we're trying to say, okay, what, is there something that truly an individual can access to get it to the language that they needed in? As opposed to whether it's that list? I think that was one of the reasons why they kind of leaned towards, let's try to get to a tool as opposed to having the list.
We're trying to make it a little more resourceful because what that translation says is go talk to your administrator. So now you added another step. And so we were trying to put the tool in their hand right away, which they'll need to access for multiple documents throughout the year.
Right. But so the challenge is also then where, in this format, we're requiring the ability to read English, right? So, so I think there is a barrier. I think there's, I understand the, you know, not exhaustive. I think there's something to be said about, that's a pretty good list, you know, even if it's the instructions to try Google Translate. I do like the idea of it, it's leaning towards, this isn't intended to be printed because we have so many links that are click here, right? This is no longer a PDF. This is, this is a webpage, you know, ultimately. You know, we might approve it as a, as a PDF, the content wise, but it really does start to lend itself towards just being a page. And then.
I'm not printing a 60-page handbook and keeping it at home, but.
In color.
Right, but, but then we do have the added abilities of having tools already there that it's native. And if someone has already chosen their language to view the district site in, the handbook is then in that as well. It might be additional steps to move it over, but not, not too much. I don't believe so.
I feel like these are the, this is a great example of something sometimes that comes up and I'm like, that would be a great capstone. Right? Like, you know.
You should have a running list to just give out to seniors. Even if, could we put like an icon or something there? Like I've just done a quick Google, there is an icon, a symbol that shows like a translate, like a translation symbol. So for people who obviously.
As universal as you can get.
As universal, yeah. So that it's just a visual that can just show that, click on the link and it should, it should help. So I don't know if that's an option.
The other issue with, you know, just instructing to copy into Google Translate, you're going to lose all the formatting, right? And it's just going to be one big document, you know? So again, I think exploring some other opportunities would be, would be good for that.
Any other question?
I had just two other questions. One, I noticed we were reading about our special education, you know, process and also for our English learners process. Could we consider like putting in a mention, because they're kind of official advisory committees, a mention to CPAC and LPAC as resources for parents? It's kind of something we still find that new parents within that, those areas don't realize that there's another tool or resource. And because we're, you know, state mandated to have these groups, it might be deemed appropriate to add those in. And the one other thing I wanted to raise up, and forgive me if I missed it, I have looked. But we, if I remember correctly, and I can't remember when it was, it was in the last year or two, had added the MGL language to the student, when we're talking about suspensions and expulsions, we'd added the MGL language, the chapter 71, 37H and three quarters. I always feel it sounds like something out of Harry Potter. But it spoke, because I feel like as I was reading that section, it spoke about the process of suspensions and this process of expulsions. But that language as a school committee, we had, we had worked on a bit and kind of, I think, agreed that we wanted it included in the parent handbook, which specified that, it just explained the law to everyone about how all alternative, you know, strategies, you know, could, to be used in advance of getting to the suspension and expulsion. And I think it just explained it really well. And I know it was a discussion that we had on school committee at the, at the time. So I'm just wondering if we could consider putting that back in.
Sure. I'm surprised it's not in there.
Yeah.
It'll still need to be cleaned up. I mean, there was a lot of redundancy in there. So I think that what happened when that was added, somebody else left whatever was in there.
Yes.
And so it got very, very messy.
Yeah.
And, you know, like Melissa had said, that we were just trying to not necessarily. start the handbook with, in A B C order, and we were talking about conduct, discipline, and then we were just nailing people with expulsion and law.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But.
No, I, I love the new layout, I love, you know, the refresh, it, it looks great.
We could put that in the back.
Yeah, but I mean, just in that section, I think is, is kind of perfectly worth.
Thank you, Mary.
Congratulations.
Yes, we can go back and, and release that language in there.
Thanks, Courtney. Yeah.
I had a comment and a question, I think the grouping that you've done is great, it's very helpful, um, to make it a little bit more easy for parents to navigate. If there's any more grouping you could do, that would be great, cuz it starts to become a list at the end, so just looking at that. Um, but one question I had was, I didn't see Alice drills in here, and I was just wondering if you had thought about putting that in, or if there was somewhere else that you can find that information.
That's a great question.
Yeah, I think we had referenced different types of drills, and not necessarily called out Alice, which is traditionally something that we haven't advertised, what that might look like, but I thought there was a comment in there about fire drills or other safety or evacuation, we can.
Fire alarms and building evacuations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is, is Alice drills covered in some other way for parents to understand what that entails, or what their kids are going through?
Well, part, part of the training that we've always been through with Alice drills is that it's not something that we want publicly advertised about how we're going to combat.
The, the principals at the building level do communicate that to families, I mean, as they're in an age-appropriate manner, like when people, knowing that this might be coming up soon, and this is kind of what we're talking about, but you're right, the actual, yeah, the actual details, what we do, how we do it, we don't communicate, and there's actually, even right now, there's even a, there's a, uh, you know, there's some districts that are moving, they've decided to use a different acronym. Uh, and we've just still continued to work with our SRO and with our, you know, with our public safety partners to, to just talk about, wh- what are we doing to just kind of empower individuals to be able to make choices in real time? But, so we didn't necessarily say we follow this protocol, you know?
Right, we didn't put, I think we used more of a general statement, like we didn't put controlled evacuation, like other types of things that we might do, cuz there's just a list of that, um, but as building principals, we would communicate, like, out a little bit in regards to like, how we prep the students, what, you know, that the drill happened, but there's pieces I don't, that would be uncomfortable sharing, cuz then it would allow, you know, it would just publicize our response, but.
It might be something that just says, other types of safety drills are conducted as administration sees fit, or something that just acknowledges to families that there are drills that are happening outside of just fire drills. Whether that happens in this iteration, or as you look towards next year, I think that's it.
Yeah.
That is a concern for some parents.
Yeah, no, that's not a lie.
We'll, we'll make that suggestion, and we'll add that in there while we're cleaning up the, um.
Yeah, it sounds like we have a little bit more work to do.
I was just, I guess Catherine stepped out, cuz I was, I guess I'm still just, I'm a little confused as to what her suggestion is, because you do have the MGL in there, oh, Catherine, I was just looking, sorry, I was looking at the handbook, trying to figure out where your question.
Do you wanna tell her a page number, and then I can?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking at, I went right to fifty and fifty-two in that section, where they are, where the MGL is referenced quite a bit. So I just wanna make sure, I think that it is in there, but I think to your point, we wanna make sure that everything, whatever was decided earlier is consistent.
What page are you?
Fifty, it starts on fifty, and then all of those different discipline pieces of, of different types of suspensions and alternatives that could take.
But like the bottom of fifty-two has the law mentioned, the bottom of fifty-two.
Yeah, it starts with alternative remedies, suspension, emergency removal.
Why don't we give her a minute to read that?
So maybe it's, but to her point, like, whatever it is that we talked about, we'll just make sure that it is there, but I kinda think that might be what it was.
We had just put in the actual language of the law, that's what it was.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Because we, we had a, a full conversation about whether or not we put the actual law language in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I just had two quick points I wanted to make, which was, one, the homeschool communication table jumped right out at me as like, this is a huge um, improvement, I think, and, and just so needed and very um, thoughtfully done, and I just really appreciated that work. Um, and then, as you were talking about the academic integrity, um, that section to me stood out because it's, it, it feels very fresh, like you, you, it feels like a full rewrite. And, and it's really written in an age-appropriate way, so that you could sit down with your kid and really, and your student and say, here's, you know, this handbook that, you know, that I sign on your behalf every, you know, fall, here's what's in it. Um, and, and I just think that that's just a really powerful way to have that in here at that age level, so I really appreciate that. Like, that whole tone is in there of like, I, I mean, it just sounds like something a classroom, I can hear it like in a classroom teacher's voice. So I just, I just thought it was really well done.
Thanks.
I was gonna have the same comment on the table, I thought that was really helpful, it's something we do a lot at work too, is like showing it in a really clear way, if you need this, you go to this, if you need this, you go to that. But I think the whole document cleaned up really nice, it looked from being like a lot more like adult and boring, to being a lot more tangible, and even the font change, I think, makes it more welcoming, and some of the color changes, so I think it, it, it doesn't feel quite as daunting as somebody that went back and read it, was like, I should have been reading this for like, all these years. No, I like, have to read it a little bit more in depthly, so. I was so much more excited to read this one than when I looked at the other.
No, that's great, and I think that's really was our, our hope to clean it up, but also make it more developmentally appropriate.
Yeah.
My final comment is just on the cover, um, I'm always one that likes branding, uh, and making it look official, so, you know, having, having a way that stands out that this is truly an official document, not just.
Probably a P S logo somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, so just.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I mean, I don't need to hold a vote for, for that, but, you know, uh, just a, a comment.
With the approval of our new roles very soon, we'll make sure that page six is updated, uh, I'm no longer the secretary, I would love to be glorious, but that will change too, so we'll make sure that that's.
You didn't know you were getting voted that, did you?
Yeah.
Calling a secretary. I've looked at that page ten times, didn't notice that, so.
I had, and I was like, ah.
Alright, we're a little, we're a little off time, so I'm gonna ask for a motion for the elementary handbooks.
Some moved.
Seconded.
Sorry, that was Catherine and Bill. Any last thoughts?
Uh, is that with the feedback that we've?
I, I think it encompasses all the feedback we've had, I haven't heard, yep.
Yeah.
Great, okay, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Thank you guys so much, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Clearly a project that's taken a lot of time, and we really appreciate it. And we'll welcome Gerard to the microphone. Uh, Director of Special Education and Social Emotional Learning.
Learning, right.
Wellness, sometimes learning, sometimes depending on the phrase, thanks, guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gerard.
Other duties as assigned.
Yes.
Hi folks, firstly, Jessica and Shane, I just wanna say, nice to see you, welcome, look forward to working with you. And then, secondarily, I just wanna say thank you so much to the committee for your um, understanding and flexibility, uh, two weeks ago. I know it was sudden, but I really appreciate it, and I was just, it was just really thoughtful and kind of everyone. And now, because of that, I apologize for making your evening even longer tonight. So, um, with all of that said, I'm really excited to be here and spend some time talking today about, um, our Department of Special Education and Social Emotional Learning. Um, give us an update, um, allow some time for questions, and, um, and also just to have some discussion about anything related to what we have in our presentation tonight. Um, I will also apologize too for some of this being duplicative, uh, we've talked about a few of the, talked about a few of the highlights in here tonight, um, Wayfinder, some of our PD, all of that, but I hope I can help us maybe even have a further deep dive into some of those discussions that, uh, that came up tonight, so I think you've all had a chance to see this. Um, and additionally, through some of our slides, I didn't wanna get into too deep of a dive with some of the data and statistics on, uh, slides thirteen and fourteen that deal with, um, that deal with some of our specific information. Um, so I put some links on there for people to take a look at, and I know a few of you have, have requested that over the years. So, um, we can just jump into it, um, Special Education and Social Emotional Learning Department, just give some broad updates. We continue to have wonderfully and talented and thriving students, um, at all levels, uh, throughout our district. I, um, have the opportunity to be in schools very frequently, and, um, see all of our students and see them thriving, and, um, and being successful at all levels, and, um, it, it, it's very exciting to see, it makes me really happy. Um, we have an incredibly talented faculty and staff, we are, we all know that education is constantly evolving, um. I will say that special education involves maybe even ten percent more than the rest of education, with changes in law, with changes in, um, DESI expectations and directives. And our team and faculty and staff just manage those changes and expectations so incredibly, and, um, it's just a tribute to, to our staff here. Um, I also think our parents and caregivers in the District of Westford are an incredible group, and I know I stressed this from day one about my desire to work collaboratively with the district, and our desire as a department and, um, Special Education Group to work collaboratively, uh, with the district, and I see families, parents, caregivers extending the same, um, efforts to our department as well, and, um, it's been incredible. We have an unbelievable CPAC, um, so much so, in fact, that some of our sister districts have reached out to me to, um, figure out or find out how our CPAC has been so successful, and, um, that obviously has nothing to do with me, it has to do with our leadership at CPAC and our participation um, with those groups, and, um, so that's something, that's something that has meant a lot to me. And, um, I know when we have had some potential changes or thoughts around special education, programming, new ideas, it's always received really, really well within, um, the public and within the district and within families, and and we really appreciate that, and I think tonight, uh, on the agenda, we'll have a further discussion about some of that more broadly. And, um, again, I will always stress collaboration, and it's, it's been wonderful to have that here within the community. And lastly, I just, I just wanna highlight our, our tremendous leadership team at the school-based level, our special education leadership team. Um, we had three new, uh, folks transition into the, in, into those positions this year. You've already heard, they had to deal with a, um, new IEP, a new software, um, I like that Kevin and Pete said kind things about that, but really, all the staff and leadership probably wanted to kill me for, um, having both, uh, new IEP and new software working together, but, um, they've just managed that so incredibly, and, um, we've done some great work at the building base level, um, we're really excited about a faculty, uh, sort of handbook recreated for the new IEP and some of the new software. So, um, so it's been really great, and, you know, I absolutely could not have done it without our tremendous team leaders, so I thank them so much. Um, just a more speci-, uh, more specifically, some of our successes this year. I remember sitting here a year ago, talking about Roots, and how excited we were about, uh, having Roots start right here at, um, in central office, um, at the Millennium Building, and here we are a year later, and it's quite possibly one of our most successful programs in the district. Um, I think many of you have seen how forward-facing it's been, um, Roots Roasters, and, and the work they do within the community and the work they've done, Senior Center, uh, Valentine's Day, um, Town Meeting, I believe they're a part of, uh, it's just been incredible. Um, we've had some great success with our, um, co-teaching at NAB-NASA this year, and additionally, other schools have expressed a desire to continue that. So we hope to continue our professional development and collaboration with our, um, with our group of folks we've been doing the co-teaching with, and expand that out. Um, specifically Stony Brook, Robinson, um, they've all expressed a desire and interest to really expand their co-teaching. And, um, I, I think we know how impactful that can be as a least restrictive environment, um, for students. And, um, then I know this committee has long talked about, asked about, and reflected upon our SEL curriculum and the work we do with SEL. You've heard some tremendous examples of that tonight, um, you've heard all about Wayfinder, so I don't have to delve back into that again. Um, I was going to say, as Melissa was talking about it, spoiler, Melissa, um, I am leaning toward, uh, Wayfinder as well. So we do have sort of a final meeting with their, the Wayfinder team, and, um, what we wanna do there is present our successes on those pilot building-based lessons, um, at the day at Miller, and see how we can build that. I think most importantly for me is I really wanna be able to have something that we can just sort of have consistently and, and sort of stand behind as a district, as a curriculum. Um, we're asking so much of our counselors, our teachers, to create their own lessons, and, um, and they've, and they've done so so effectively. And, um, I want us to be able to support teachers, and support counselors, support school psychologists, um, support everyone who does that SEL work, and really allow them an opportunity to be able to have something right at their fingertips, and, um, to me, the, um, it was great to hear, it was great to hear, um, Melissa and Chris talk about the successes with it, because I see it from thirty thousand feet, and, and I, I can feel the successes, but I also, it was really important to me to hear those on the, um, on, you know, sort of the ground level. Uh, just a couple of fun pictures here, here's, um, here's, here's Roots at the, uh, at the, um, Valentine's Day, uh, event, at the Senior Center. Um, and then this is a really fun picture too, uh, another success for us has been the Unified Sports. I think you heard, um, Courtney talk about our track and field event that is upcoming, um, it was incredible last year. We've also expanded that out this year to, um, basketball, and as you can see in the picture, the, uh, check out the crowd in the background, it's, uh, pretty incredible, the turnout, the, um, the Unified Basketball, uh, got and was had, uh, as a part of, of what we did there. Um, again, a few more successes, um, and some planning, uh, for, for next year as well, um. We're really excited about, some folks have asked over the years about transparency as it relates to special education, and that's something that's really important to me. So, um, this year, we added program descriptions to the website, um, we are trying to review those as often as we can to, um, update name changes, uh, expectations around entrance and exit criteria, but that was something that was really important to folks in the community, and it was really important to me as well personally in our department, we wanted to be able to highlight, um, what the work it is that we do, and have everyone know and experience that. Um, some of the drawbacks maybe are that, uh, some other towns call us up and ask about those, but that's, that can be a good thing in some ways. Um, uh, Superintendent Dr. Chu, uh, gave his budget proposal on twelve-nine, clearly laying out our expectations around, uh, new programming and, um, and what we were hoping to do within the Special Education Department for next year. Um, Dr. Chu's also great about his newsletter, if it needs to include, uh, some special education updates. And, um, we continue also to offer as many community presentations as we can, um, this year, we, we've had, uh, multiple, multiple evening presentations that were in conjunction with CPAC, also one around sort of a status of the new IEP, what that was looking like, I think it was important for us as a department to be able to just sort of take a temperature check there, and see how are people doing, what was happening, um, what was successful for us. Um, looking ahead to next year and, and thinking about some of, uh, some of our successes, we're really excited about, um, the expanded programming in three specific areas. Uh, the first is, is Compass, some of you, and I've heard you reference this tonight, formerly known as our medically fragile program. Um, we currently have that in the pre-K through two schools, we're expa-, uh, we're expanding that to the three through five a day. Um, we have a space, um, we have current interviews currently happening right now, and it was really exciting to have the support of you folks here as the school committee of the community, to be able to hire for those positions, make sure they're appropriately staffed, and, um, we're really excited about being able to offer that. Um, secondarily, and we make it into this later in the night, we're really excited about the opportunity to be able to, um, bring back some students who are privately placed, and, um, and, and it just gives us an opportunity to be able to provide services for all of our students here in the district, because I believe so intensely in public schools, and I want all of our students to be able to experience um, their education here in the public schools in Westford, if they're residents of Westford, and then, um, And then related a little bit to what we were talking about with social emotional learning, really excited about the expansion of our SAIL program, which is our social emotional learning program that exists right now at day in the three through five. And we're expanding that next year to the six through eight. So we're really excited about that. Skipped over the one, the second bullet there, the Reach Classroom at NAB. Many of you are familiar with the work we do with Reach that is consistent throughout the district. But right now at the pre-K through two level only exists at Miller. It's my vision, it could be a decade, who knows? But I would love to be able to offer all of our programs in our community neighborhood-based schools so that our students don't have to travel, so that our students can be with their cohort and their peers. And this is step one in allowing that to happen and expanding Reach to NAB. So we will now have two Reach programs available at both Miller and NAB-NASIT. And maybe someday it will be at every school throughout the district. So like I said, our students can experience their education in their neighborhood school. Just jumping ahead, and I don't mean to rush or gloss over anything. I want to have time for questions and for all of us to be able to, you know, continue some of the conversation here. Specifically, I wanted to talk a little bit about social emotional learning and what Westford is doing to continue to expand our resources with social emotional learning. So for us, I think you've heard a little bit about Panorama tonight. Panorama is a comprehensive software that allows us to support and screen students. It functions, it, it, it functions where it's basically a survey where it allows students to answer questions about their mental health and wellness. This occurs at all levels. And what makes me so proud is we don't just use Panorama as our only tool. Individually at building-based levels, we have additional mental health screenings. They occur at WA, there's a universal screening for tools for anxiety and depression. We have what's called the Strengths and Weakness Questionnaire at the elementary school level. And these are all, these are all tools that, that, that teachers, administrators and buildings are using on that small intimate level. They review the work of the data. If there's any concerns around quote unquote lower scores or scores that have students at risk or have students or have us concerned about the mental health and wellness of students, we meet with those students immediately. And then again, to reiterate, we, we've, we've talked about piloting the Wayfinder SEL curriculum and it's been so great to hear so many of the positives around that. I think you heard Valerie, you asked a really good question about just sort of some of the overlap with that. Panorama and Wayfinder, and I think Dr. Chu said this, we would, we would sort of take one or the other. In that situation, they're both, there's some redundancy with the two. So I think it's important for us to highlight the one that is most successful and the one that works best for us as a district. They both have their advantages, they both have obviously their challenges. But the piece about Wayfinder that I like so much is the access to the curriculum. So Panorama, sometimes their, their data and their surveys can be great, but then our question is, well, what do we do with that? What do we do with those data and surveys? How do we respond to that? And Wayfinder gives you sort of that next level of, of support there. Supporting our students just continues. We, we have consistent SEL levels delivered by counselors and teachers occurring at all grade levels. I've seen a cyberbullying lesson and curriculum exist at our middle schools at Stony Brook. And we have seen partnerships, our partnerships grow with multiple different community centers and groups throughout the region. Some of you may or may not be familiar with some of, of the, some of the groups we work with here. The Westford Community Wellness Center, Prevention Partners of Northern Middlesex, Simply Social Kids, Riverside Trauma. So just working together with all of these groups. And the, the great part of this, it is, it's not just me. I, I am not going to all of these meetings. You see a passion and dedication from our counselors, from our teachers, from our special education teachers, from our department chairs, reaching out, participating in these groups and attending PD, attending seminars together with all of these community groups. And for us to be able as Westford to have that representation, I know is so important. And it allows us opportunities, it allows us opportunities to find out about new grants, to, to work collaboratively together with groups to find what's working and what's not. Full disclosure, there was some kind words tonight about Wayfinder and us finding Wayfinder. We found that from other districts and we found that by working together with other districts. And you can't do that without our, our staff here being willing and able to attend those, those collaborative partnerships, seminars, groups, all of that together. Really exciting, we had the creation of a mindfulness room this year at Stony Brook, which was really incredible to see. And again, these are, these are some of the creations that I'm most proud of because they are, they are progressive and they're thoughtful rather than being reactive. They're proactive. And it's us together working as a district, as a community to say, hey, I think we need this. I think we need X, I think we need Y to make us the strongest community we can be and to make us have the most positive social emotional learning environments we can. And, and so that makes me really proud. Just wanted everyone to see Hamlet, Harris Hamlet, who is at WA. He is our dog. Therapy dog, is that our exact, is that the title?
Facility dog.
Facility dog, that's it, that's it, that's it, thank you. And just really exciting and I, I'm sure you would have heard from our WA representatives tonight about what a presence Hamlet has been at the school and how great he is to, to have around. And I think you all know the data and research around animal support is just, it's really positive. So again, for us to think as a community and for us to think proactively about doing something like that is pretty, pretty incredible, so.
What's the difference between a facility dog and a therapy dog?
So it is, he is a trained, a trained canine to, to, to be existing within the facility. He is not a specific therapy dog for an individual. Is that the best way to separate the two?
There's a service dog is a therapy dog and then a facility dog. But he's a facility dog because he's owned by Westford Public Schools.
Yes, so a good way to think about it too is, is maybe individual versus broader group. That's another way to think about it as well. And, you know, obviously a therapeutic animal is usually sort of, I don't want to say assigned, but it's, it works with.
That's specific things for an individual, right?
Yep, yep, so, thank you for that. One of the other things I wanted to highlight too is just some of our, and again, you've heard a good deal of talk tonight about Panorama and, and that survey and what it is. We do have two links in this presentation if you want to take a deep dive into this. I will say right up front, there were positive gains and I want to say all. I think there were some areas where we had zero gains, but our, our results maintained. And to me, even if they were small and incremental, up five, six, two, three percentage points, that's incredible. And it shows that Westford is trending in the right direction. We all know that we still continue to exist in, in, in a world where there is a mental health crisis and we don't have, but I'm saying broadly, macro societally, we don't have the supports. Gaining supports is very challenging. Managing, managing the healthcare system is very challenging. So for all of us to see some of these gains indicates to us that the work we're doing as a community, the work you folks support us with here today is, is working. So I just highlighted a couple of bullets that are specific to social emotional learning. Some of Panorama deals with academics, academic preparedness and, and you'll see that when you take a deep dive. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of areas that were related to our, related to our social emotional learning in the district. Seventy-nine percent of students say that change can be made in effort. And that's up five, five percentage points. Seventy-eight percent of students say change can be made in behavior. That's up five percentage points, obviously indicative of the belief that students have in themselves and, and what they believe they can do. You'll see a couple other bullet points there. Seventy-three percent of students say they pay attention and resist distractions. That's probably great, especially now being five years removed from COVID where all we had was distractions. Seventy-nine percent of students work independently and stay focused, also up five percentage points. And then I just thought this one in here was great. Ninety-six percent of students were polite to other students. And I know that may seem random, but that was something that really stuck, stuck out to me and something that was really important to me and, and great to see, a testament to the awesome kids in this district, so. Moving along, related to Panorama, we also have some Cartwheel data in here. For those of you unfamiliar with Cartwheel, Cartwheel is just an interface that allows us to be able to access mental health supports immediately. It's, it's, it's an online portal where we schools partner with Cartwheel to find therapists, to find, to find family support, family therapists, all of that rolled together. So you work with Cartwheel. Cartwheel's best sort of selling points are the engagement, are the ability of, of, are the ability for them to decrease wait times, the ability to just sort of manage the healthcare piece that I talked about before. Students are not required to have private insurance. Cartwheel will, Cartwheel will, will support all students if a referral is made. So this year we had, we, so far, I think that, actually the data was today, really helpful from WA. Lauren Clark provided me with this today. So 56 students have been referred through Cartwheel. And then from there, not every student takes advantage of the referral or, or, you know, could potentially be screened out or may not, may not need the, the service or anything like that, that obviously all makes sense to you folks. And 41 of our 56 students right now have engaged in the care. And so every year we are afforded the opportunity to have 50, we can have more than 50 referrals, but we can have 50 referrals who then are able to engage in the, the support provided by Cartwheel. So years ago when we started Cartwheel, one of our measurements or one of our questions I think was, well, are we going to use it? Are we going to be able to use this and will we use all of these? We are seeing we absolutely are. And, and 94% of students in Westford say they enjoy meeting with their Cartwheel therapist. It is a virtual service. So far, over 700 total sessions have been delivered to students and Cartwheel tracks this data nationally and this is seen as excellent engagement. So not only is this a testament to the work we're doing with our counselors and with WA, but it's a testament to you folks as parents, as a community, willing and open to accepting this support and most importantly, the students themselves, the most important, the students themselves willing to, to accept the help and engage in that help. And you'll see there in blue, we have another link that you can take a look at some of that Cartwheel data. Just, just take note of this, I, I've been, I've been tricked by this before too. Some of the Cartwheel data in there is, is sort of like the national data. So when you're reading through it, when you're reading through it, just, just make sure you, you take note of, of, of the Westford data. Obviously it can be helpful to see the national data too, but we, I think we'd like to focus on what we're doing here. I touched on this a little bit before and so had some of our principals who joined us here tonight. I did just want to talk about some more nuts and bolts parts of, of our special education worlds. We did have a new IEP this year and it was, to me, now we see that it was, it was, what's the right phrase, maybe a tad overrated, we were all overrated, our nervousness related to this because people have done such, such amazing work of sort of transitioning to this new document. And that's not only teachers, our APs and team leaders. Again, it's parents and it's the community responding to the documents and understanding that there might be challenges around it and understanding that it was new for all of us. So I know I really appreciate the community's work there and I really, really appreciate how hard our staff has worked here to understand this and make it meaningful. Like I said, we have a new software. One of, and the reason why I mention this, because it may seem that it's sort of relevant only to our staff, but the new software has a digital signature. So hey, that's big news in the world of special education since so much of what we've done over the years has been paper, has been US mail, has been slowed down, all of that. So I think that people have been really responsive to the digital signature aspect of that. Our admins here have done such a great job with that. We still are offering folks, if they want PDFs, if they want paper files, you are still absolutely able to do that. But I think it's really sped up some of what we do in terms of, in terms of signing IEPs, generating consent, all of that working out together. We are almost, we are fully offering in-person meetings here in Westford. Many families are taking advantage of those. I always prefer them myself, for me. Obviously, we also love to have the virtual meetings as well. We want to be responsive and respectful of working parents, working parent schedules, parents who travel, parents who, who just find that is an appropriate option for them. So we will always be responsive to families and what they want. We will never demand a, or we will never ask for a particular meeting in either, in either form. So we, we, we always leave that to the parents and be respectful of that decision. Like I said, we, we had a training packet created. Another, another, another handbook or brochure we're really excited about that we're in the final phases of just putting a bow on is our parent brochure. And I actually have a scheduled meeting on that tomorrow morning to be able to just sort of take a final look at that. And that's another document we'd like to circulate on the website, make available to parents. Again, with transparency and clarity being our central goal, having parents fully understand their rights. A parent can be new to special education or they can have a, they, they can have no knowledge of the process. And to me, I see myself as a resource to be able to educate parents on that and not to just sort of hide or obfuscate or just, I, I don't want to do that. I'd rather say to parents, hey, this is the process, this is what happens, this is what we're here for, this is what we're trying to do together. So, so that's really important to me. So we hopefully will have that done by the close of the year and we're really excited about that. And once again, that's our, that, that's our team leaders. I would love to, I would love to take credit for that, but it's the tremendous work that they're doing on the building-based level and that we're doing collaboratively. Just some, just some staffing updates and I'm often asked by parents about professional development. What we're doing together as a group. And, and so a couple, couple things here. First is we have created a budget-neutral position for the Assistant Director of Special Education. Those of you here have known that we've been, we've been working on that all year. We're really excited about that. Just a few things with me, obviously made us back up the process a little bit with that unfortunately. We were hoping based on our original timeline to pretty much have the offers this week, but we're now having, we're having interviews start Friday of this week. So we're really excited about that. And we do have a, we do have a parent volunteer for that, for that interview committee as well, which is really exciting. And.
At the risk of rushing you along, you've given us a lot of information. Your next couple of slides are things that we've been talking a lot about.
All right, let's do it.
So I'm just saying like the, so you can, if there's specific things. Yeah, improvement plans like the restorative practices and thing. I think it's great that you have it here, so somebody's reading through this, they'll see it, but.
I am.
Get to questions.
I have no problem with that. So why don't we do that? You can scroll down and please, 16, 17, 18, 19, you can take a look at those slides. You're always welcome to follow up with me during office hours or a, an email and I'll happily answer any questions. But if folks have questions now, let's, let's open it up.
On that note about office hours, Gerard, how's it been going? Any resources that you need there to better expand on?
No, it's been, thank you very much Bill for asking that. It's been really, it's been incredible. It's, it's been great for me and, and it, it, it allows me an opportunity to meet with the community, to meet with folks, to hear their concerns. We do both options, we do virtual and in-person and. And, um, I will have some week where jam three straight and then I'll have other weeks where, um, where I might, may have one or two, uh, parents, but they have been consistently, they have been consistently filled. And, um, it's been really great. But no, don't, don't really need any help there, we have it locked in. We'll keep them in place during the summer as well, if that's convenient for families. But, uh, yeah, thank you for that, it's been awesome.
Other thoughts, other questions?
Lot of great information here, a lot of great successes. I'm just curious, uh, what your biggest challenge of the year may have been.
Yeah, so, um, um, yeah, the rest of the night, Tom. Uh, so it's, uh, it's budgetary concerns, it's really hard. It's, um, and it's not exclusive to Westford. It's, uh, but it's budgetary concerns. We've heard over the years, we've talked about this at length here as a group and we've all been very transparent, uh, transportation, very challenging. Um, out of district placements, very challenging. So those, those, uh, budget concerns are probably the hardest for us. And then honestly, and this is sort of a macro thing too, is, um, staffing can be really hard. Um, I wonder sometimes if the burnout in special education or the challenges we face in special education make, uh, make it hard for us to hire. Um, I have read tangible data about the number of, um, special education, uh, requests for licenses have, and Bill might have some knowledge of this too, have dramatically decreased in the past ten years. And that's data that's provided through us through DESI and their, um, online licensing portal. So that's been really hard for us. And if we have someone, uh, if we have a position open up, um, you know, maybe during the school year or there's, or there's a long-term substitute, those have been really hard for us. And, um, I was, I hit my head on the ceiling, jumping out of my seat when Courtney told us about the, um, the job fair. And I was like, this is such a good idea. So, um, so little things like that. And I think together as a community, we're always working together, reaching out to one another. Um, if some of us have an interview with a candidate, um, that we feel like would be a great candidate for another position or another school or if we had, we were down to a final two choices, just everybody sharing and collaborating with that. So I think those have been the two hardest things, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Um, you had mentioned the potential for panorama or wayfinder to potentially be the district model. Um, I know it's, you know, being that K to five pilot, but, you know, make sure there's some current attention paid to six to eight in our WA as well. Because I think that's going to be, lend a lot of data, especially as we talk about, um, you know, the mental health, our wellness and, you know, all those indicators.
Yeah, one hundred percent, it's, it's a great point, um, it's a great point, Bill. And, and I, I, I think when we come back with our meeting with wayfinder, we want to be able to ask that, we want to be able to say like, hey, that, because panorama is great for the upper grade levels and for, you know, secondary schools. They have some great stuff in there. Um, so I want to make sure we're meeting the needs of both and that's a, that's a good reminder.
Anyone else?
And it is a great video, if you haven't seen the video, it's the Best Buddies video.
Um, I just wanted to mention, I really appreciate, I lost what slide number it is, but, um, under the new, new IEP, you, you were very straightforward by sharing a frustration. And I, I think sometimes it's easy in these slides to only come to us with highlights, but I, I really just wanted to remark on how much I appreciate you bringing all the warts too. So thank you for that.
Um, sure, and, and again, I think that's part of, of transparency and just understanding. Um, and like, a, a sort of good analogy with that is the panorama versus wayfinder. Like, you, you, you have to learn from your mistakes. And there have been, there have been challenges, there were some parts that were really frustrating, um, with that change. So I try to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
So.
Thank you.
Just some feedback on the new IEP. Um, I think it'll be interesting to see what we're like this time next year because I know some of the feedback that came out of CPAC last, last week during the meeting was there's still a number of families who haven't, their timing, whatever schedule they're on. It hasn't hit yet, so, um, it'll, it'll be interesting to see kind of, once we're two years in, where everyone has gone through the cycle, yeah.
So Catherine, great point. We had our, um, we had our, uh, special education leadership meeting. We meet every two weeks and we met Friday and we talked about that exactly. And our hope is actually it will just be significantly easier for everyone. Um, in, in terms of not only the creation of a new document and a new software, but also having that, having that new IEP, having folks see it. And, um, you know, DESI did give you the, the one year to be able to do that, knowing that that was going to be the challenge. But, uh, by June twentieth, we'll, we'll, we'll have had to have had it done. And if we didn't, there was a problem somewhere, so we'll know that.
Thank you so much. Any other? Great.
Um, according to our agenda, we're going to do graduation requirements, but I think Gerard has a, has a part in the conversation with the timeout spaces policy. So I was hoping we could switch those around so that Gerard could be a part of that discussion and then he could go on his merry way for the night, maybe.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So, um, we'll move on to a continued discussion of P five-three-two-seven, timeout spaces.
Um, I'm sorry.
No, please.
Well, just to say that the public comment is still open until Thursday. Um, policy committee, subcommittee met this week and we also, um, rode in with Gerard and I think also probably for Shayna and Jess, it was helpful to try and, and bring you up to speed. Um, and we did get some community feedback as well. So, um, I actually did update and I sent that to everybody, um, yesterday, the policy language, um, and I did put it in green, um, even though it's all new language. Um, and so, um, some of the just changes, just to highlight is, we're, we're suggesting as well, um, that the parent guardian be offered the opportunity to view the timeout space in advance, um, prior to signing, um, IEPs or behavior support plans. Um, based on Courtney's, your suggestion last week as well, we rejigged, um, the point about, um, having documentation. So we're saying that there is a recommendation from a licensed mental health professional or physician, but we've taken off the end of that, um, session, that point. And again, as Gerard and I, as we discussed, that can just be our school psychologist or BCBA who are recommending that, um, strategy for that student. Um, and then, um, we cleaned up a little bit on the logging, the documentation and we're, we're kind of calling it the Westford Public Schools Timeout Log to standardize that, um, documentation, um, which Gerard is, is going to, um, be overseeing. Um, and we added in one extra piece on, um, regarding notification for parents. So, um, we've no, um, we, if a, the space is used, that the parents or guardians must be verbally notified, preferably as soon as possible, but at least within twenty-four hours. And that written notification must be provided within three days. Um, so again, it's just standardizing the process for the communication piece.
Very small piece that we do at my program is multiple attempts, you know, to try to, it might be something we think about, you know, like a call, an email, but we've noted that in our log, you know, so.
Because obviously parents are working or they, you know, they missed the call and you obviously don't want a student arriving home from a day with, without some indication, so, yeah.
Just one note on that, um, may want to clarify, days. Is it calendar days, business days, school days? You know, because, you know, if it happens on Friday and, and the school is saying, school days and, you know, parents are going, well, I didn't get notified on Sunday.
Yeah, no, perfect.
The one part I looked at, sorry, the header, the parental consent requirement?
Yeah.
I thought maybe that was a little bit too specific because your bullets are talking about a parental, something being noted in the IEP plus the written permission, plus some sort of recommendation from a, um, mental health professional. So I was wondering if maybe the header should be something a little bit more like required documentation prior to usage of space, of timeout spaces, instead of narrowing it to parental consent, because our bullets are broader than parental consent.
That's a good point.
So I put like, my, I wrote required documentation prior to usage of timeout space or something like that.
Gotcha.
Anything else on that? So that would come back to us on May twenty-seventh for a vote.
Yeah.
Just a really small question. Um, there, it said, uh, there was a requirement for the timeout log to be reviewed monthly, which would change to frequency, frequently, which is just a little more vague and open to interpretation, I was just curious.
So I understand it and again, using my own practice, we review, uh, restraints on a monthly basis, but you can review it more, more frequently as needed based on the acuity. So I think leaving it frequently allows for that. We know it's happening monthly, you know, at least, again, you know.
And, and the thing is, we have spaces in this district that haven't been used in probably close to three years, is, is some of our data. So putting a, a monthly, uh, on it specifically, um, didn't make sense in that, in that way. So that's why we changed it to frequently.
Yeah, that was the main piece there, Jessica, that's a really good question as well. And I think the, the central part of that is that very positively, we, we, we have stretches of time where the space is not utilized at all, so, yeah.
Just had one, one follow-up question. Um, it's, it sounds like this has been a very collaborative, it's been review or, or creation at the committee level and the administration level. I was just wondering how we circulated it among building-based staff at all?
Well, Gerard has been speaking with, um, with the various, um, staff members who would be kind of, in the last year and a half, really, like, this, this policy has been kind of.
So nobody would really be surprised, you think?
Yeah, so that, that is a, that is, Valerie, honestly, that's a really good question. Someone brought up to me the other day, and if we're going to talk about horts and transparency, was there a teacher on the committee? And I hadn't thought of that. Um, we did have a member of the community who is heavily involved in this world, um, who is a teacher in another district, who is a, is a part of this committee. Um, and so that was helpful to us. Um, but I think that that was something that, you know, reflecting back, we could have, we could have had someone as a part of that. That said, um, we did just, in our, in our, uh, Bible weekly meetings, we did talk about this together. We have been talking about it for a significant amount of time. DESI has released some information and I've really been working to try to share that with folks and get from the building-based level, um, feedback and input from administrators, um, and teachers to find out just sort of, you know, the, uh, the language that we'd like to use.
And, and also just on that as well, Gerard, I know, it feels like it was forever ago and it wasn't that long ago. Um, myself and Sean Kelly, who was also on the policy committee meeting, we actually went, met with Gerard at, um, one of the schools and specifically spoke to the principal on that room, at, at grade length, um, prior to kind of starting the writing process, to kind of really get an input from that, um, staff member as to, um, their experience with us, great.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, thank you for that, Catherine. It does see all jumbled together, but we did, we did take tours of the buildings and the spaces and collaborated with, uh, building, building staff and, um, administrators, teacher programs, uh, to program teachers when we took those tours as well, so, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight. I'm, I'm sorry, I was wrapping up the presentation. Um, any final thoughts on the policy? Okay.
Great, thank you for weighing in on that discussion and for your presentation earlier. Really appreciate it, your time tonight.
All right.
Thanks, Gerard.
Thanks, folks.
Okay, so I'll pivot then as well to P six-one-one-zero. Um, as you can see again, we have updated, um, this, uh, the draft version again. Um, we completely rewrote, the policy committee rewrote the opening paragraph because we just didn't like it, so we decided now is the time to do it. It kind of came in hot and heavy and Jess, you'd, you'd noted it too. Um, so we had actually rewritten it, um, so that's the change from our last day. And then, um, there was one or two tweaks we needed to do, some of the math wasn't mathing, we fixed that. Um, but the main point of our conversation, or one of the main points of our conversation last week, if you want to, if you wanted to look at the end, was the, um, annual review, um, component we put into it. So, um, and again, we may want to change the header, but we, we reviewed that and said, each year, the school committee shall formally approve the program of studies prior to its publication and implementation. In the event of any substantial changes to the program of studies, policy P six-one-one-zero shall be reviewed to ensure alignment with the district's educational goals and compliance with the state standards. So that put into place, you know, a kind of a, a potential spot in, in this school, in the school committee meeting here where, you know, when we're doing the program of studies that we may need to double check that we're still in alignment with the policy without using the word review and committing the, the committee to an annual review.
And what would that look like?
In what that would look like.
I think the intent there is that.
And that was the intent originally, yeah.
Right, is that, you know, we have had lots of discussions about how this committee has not been routinely reviewing the program of studies and this discussion has spurred that for next year. So I think codifying that in this policy is really helpful. Um, and without, and, and, and as that, as like an incremental change without further prescribing what else will happen at this point, like what, before we've even lived it. You know, it feels, it reminds me a little bit of the non-general fund guidebook where we like piloted it for a year before locking in the policy, right? So we're kind of saying like, okay, next year, we're going to talk about a program of studies review. I don't want to further limit, you know, or further prescribe that.
Yeah.
So, um, from a meeting point of view, this is our third discussion on policy, the, the draft that's in there, sorry, that's in the packet. Um, we are planned for a vote on May twenty-seventh. We obviously had two members, um, exit the committee and two members join the committee. Um, so what I'm hoping for tonight is to really get a sense of where members stand on the draft. And at the moment, the draft has that senior DLT credit change as well as the PE reduction and that annual review. And I'm hoping to get a sense from the committee on where people are with that draft. Obviously, um, you all know that there has been a proposal to also increase, um, the VPA credits. So I just want to kind of get a feel for where we think we're headed, if there are remaining questions that need to be answered and how the committee, um, is ready for May twenty-seventh.
Before we do that, could I just add a few things about the visual and performing arts?
Okay.
Okay. Um, I just want to talk a little bit about graduation requirements and what, what they're for, the function of graduation requirements, because they reckon, they recognize that those things are important and there are areas, studies going forward for students after graduation. They're there to ensure that the students are prepared for whatever comes next, which may or not, may or may not be college, work, the armed services or other options. Is the intention of the WPS graduation requirements that students receive a well-rounded education? Who created the Mass Core graduation requirements? Mass Core graduation requirement recommendations were created in two thousand and seven, revised in two thousand and eighteen from BESE or the State Board of Education. An advisory group compared, composed of educators, students, guidance counselors, business representatives and staff from the Department of Education and Secondary Education and the Department of Higher Education also contributed to its development. Mass Core recommends one unit of study in the arts, which is equal to the credit of one full year. Our neighboring towns of Chelmsford and Littleton require one year of the arts for their high school graduation requirement. Westford's visual and performing arts classes include visual arts, theater and music classes and comprise fifty-eight different choices for electives. We are fortunate that Westford students receive a foundation in music and visual art from grades K to eight. However, at Westford Academy, there are many different types of VPA electives that students have never experienced before or at the high school level. High school students benefit from expression of feeling through music, art and theater. Arts are an avenue for students to communicate emotions, which not only are valid for art forms, but have a strong mental health benefit, since the arts create a way to connect emotionally to self and to others. In an era of increasing emotional isolation, artistic collaboration creates a healthy culture for students, the school and community. These artistic experiences are remembered and taken into the world as possibilities for exploration and enrichment in lifetime pursuits as singers, actors, artists, and just as important as audience members, supporters of the arts and possibly parents of children who are interested in pursuing the arts. Although some of our students may pursue these areas professionally, we need to consider the importance and enrichment of lives for those who may choose to spend adulthood doing community theater, band, orchestra, or chorus, and who may continue to create through visual arts as lifetime pursuits regardless of college attendance. Currently, we require one semester of a V P A course for graduation completion. A semester offers one experience of a half a year in a single art form. Approximately seventy-five to eighty percent of our students pursue at least one year or two semesters of V P A courses. For this year, it was estimated that only eighty seniors did not meet the one-year Mass Core recommendation. As a school system that is trying to give their students more choices, we have to ask, is an arts requirement of one year in the best interests of our students? There are students who may wish to participate more fully in V P A classes but feel the pressure of other requirements or goals. There are students who may be afraid to try something new. There are students who may be discouraged by peers or family to make an additional semester of V P A a priority. Are the arts important enough to require high school students to engage in those subjects for one year instead of one semester? V P A is the only subject area in the graduation requirement that currently does not meet the Mass Core recommendation. Given the current draft to recommend a graduation requirements, if the V P A graduation requirement was extended to one year, students would still have twenty-two point five credits in electives for free choice, or nine semesters where students could pick their electives during their high school career. And I noted from the survey last fall that just twenty-three students out of three hundred and fifty-six students voted to increase electives in the student survey. As a school committee, we need to discuss what is the best path moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to open it up to the entire committee with, again, kind of where you're feeling, or if there's other information or data points you need before May twenty-seventh. So, yeah, Tom, great. Thanks for volunteering.
She's not in the hot seat anymore.
Actually, something that you said at the last meeting, Valerie, kind of stuck with me this week, or these two weeks. And that was that this pressure on flexibility really came to a head when the, essentially, the option to defer freshman year came up. And that had the impact of, in the, in V P A, I know this through experience, not from my kids, but from other kids that we were very closely working with. It created the fact that they could not have the V P A for the full year. So I just, that with the new guidelines around health and wellness, I'm just wondering if leaving health and wellness at the twelve point five, still moving to some health and wellness model, but only having that requirement in the freshman year of, like, being able to take the five classes over the four years, right? Still having four years, having at least one class every year, but being able to have that flexibility that was noted as part of the reason for this discussion coming up. Having that built in. So, you know, and again, I'm not trying to get into program of studies, but if we had that health and wellness model where freshman health was still taught freshman year, or those topics were taught, I don't know how it would work. I'm not in that, but-
Sorry, Tom, do you mind me out? So you're trying to suggest that you could defer something?
So previously-
Sorry. It's nine thirty, so.
Previously, prior, anyway, I don't remember the exact year at this point because I can't math right now. I believe it was phys ed could be deferred as a freshman.
Right.
And then taken as a double, as a full year of gym, sophomore, junior, or senior year. And when getting in line with the must-be taught every year, right? Combined with freshman health, you know, that created a bottleneck freshman year. So I'm just wondering if there's the ability to meet the M G L, still have all of the curriculum that is currently offered, but still offering flexibility somehow.
So your policy would be, let me just clarify, so make sure I understand what he's saying. So from ten in the draft, you would go back to twelve point five, but sort of reinstitute the potential for deferral?
Right, and at the same-
Or are you suggesting like something new, like a substitution, or?
No, no, I'm not. I'm not even getting into substitutions, but still looking, I mean, we're already at the ten, at the ten point oh, and I'm sorry to throw something new in now, but at the ten point oh, we're already asking for a redesign of the curriculum to be a health and wellness model. I'm just wondering if we still get that health and wellness model covering all of the requirements of the new standards, which we haven't digested yet, but still offering that flexibility.
What I was going to say was that, and Courtney, I think, might have a little bit more memory of it, but the conversation around removing the deferral was, yes, because we weren't following the law. And it was also creating significant scheduling challenges, right? So like you would end up with, I think there were times when, I'm making this up, but I know it would be like a hundred and fifty percent of the senior class ended up taking phys ed because they needed to, that many students needed to fill that requirement at that time. And so I know that that was a challenge that was happening, and it was creating issues for W A in general, just with staffing as well, too, and figuring out the, I guess, I would like to say it's unpredictable. It's unpredictable in that you don't know when students are going to make up the time, so you don't know, is it going to be, you know, more students in the sophomore class, more students in the senior class, whatever? It was driven, I think, primarily by the fact that, you know, they weren't following, by that, that by allowing a deferment, you're not following the M G L, right? So like, how, why would you hold on to that argument if you're doing that? But I know it also created concerns and issues around the ability to actually schedule those classes and get students what they needed if they didn't have it when they were in that grade. But we could ask questions about it, yeah.
Does anybody else want to share their thoughts?
Sure. So the last two meetings, I've been pretty vocal about keeping the phys ed and health curriculum credit requirements as is at twelve and a half. I think we've heard tonight a number of different data points and, you know, mentions across Arcade of Five schools and their school improvement plans. They're implementing a full two times a week wellness curriculum for next school year. We've talked about collaborative problem solving, how, you know, we're addressing behavioral conflicts across the district, and that, you know, is a direct indicator of student wellness. The Wayfinder pilot, you know, connections to Panorama and something that our wellness department, our counselors use, you know, Gerard mentioned, our mental health crisis. We received a letter from five eighth graders about eating disorders and what the school committee could do to better support our input in that curriculum or the lessons and topics that are addressed in health curriculum. It was the charge of the Grad Requirements Working Group, two points. What requirements will make our students best prepared with the skills needed for college and career readiness after W A? And then how do we allow for more choice for students when selecting courses? I am a proponent of a well-rounded, balanced, comprehensive, and broad curriculum. I think the charge of Westford Public Schools is to ensure that our students, wherever they go after their time in this district, they're able to critically think, to process, to problem-solve, to evaluate, to communicate, to adapt, to work as a team, and to develop the regulatory skills to address their emotional, social, behavioral, and physical wellness. I, you know, I share the sentiments of the K to five principals and that they're addressing this wellness curriculum head-on. And I think, you know, they understand the gravity of these standards. I think we've heard from our W A Wellness Department, the gravity of these standards. We received an email in January, I've entered sixty students across sixteen sections. We're averaging about thirty students a section. We're not even talking about students with I E Ps and five oh fours. Essentially, if we're moving from a five-credit model to four credits, sorry, five courses to four courses, so twelve and a half down to ten, we're essentially talking about a twenty percent reduction in the department. And then, you know-
Can you clarify that, just so it doesn't get misinterpreted?
So five courses, right? So if we're saying one course of phys ed per year, plus right now freshman health, were to be reduced down to four, let's call them phys ed and health courses across, once every grade year, because that's the law. We're trying to take all those standards, many of those are, you know-
I think your point was you're saying it's a reduction in time. It's not a reduction in staff.
Thank you.
When you say a reduction, I think people in here know, we're not talking about, this is, that's not what this is.
That's fine. I didn't mean to do that to you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
But I think, you know, we're still considering how many students are going to need to be met by those courses.
Right.
So four courses now, taking those seven hundred and sixty students. I mean, let's say it's less, right? We know enrollment's going down a bit. Let's call it seven hundred a year. Or, sorry, excuse me, seven hundred a semester, if we do some of the math. I think there is a lot to handle in that curriculum for those four years. We've talked about things like we could add to our, to our W A program of studies. We've talked about financial literacy. We've talked about social media and technology, ethics, awareness, safety. You know, we could incorporate, you know, community service aspects. I, I'm a firm believer right now that we're rushing headlong into this. I think, you know, even to echo Lori's points, the curriculum that needs to be in place at W A should support the whole student. They have college, they have their adulthood to figure out, you know, where they want to specialize. And, you know, my stance is that we keep phys ed and health as is. I'm even a proponent of adding another two and a half credits to V P A, too. I just think, you know, the survey, you know, we, the working group survey neglected to ask ninth graders their input about their experience or, you know, what they would choose to do. And yet, we're talking about giving ninth graders extra elective input, you know, to pursue that extra elective. I just, you know, there are a lot of points here that I'm trying to make that I, that's how I feel, so.
I had sent an email to everyone as a citizen before I was elected about, a little bit about my thoughts after having listened to this last few meetings. I think I'm close to your camp, Bill. I think that we have a lot of academic pressures already at W A on our students, and I think removing a credit course gives some flexibility or pressures from home or from wherever, or internal pressures to add on more academics in that time spot. And so I'm not a proponent of removing it without at least some, I don't know, compromise there. I understand some flexibility. So my question I had posed as a public citizen was, could we have the two and a half credits be elected either in P E wellness or in V P A so that they can decide? Valerie, you had said something, I think, two meetings ago, like, this is good for mental health, but not everybody's mental health is the same, right? And so some child may get that break from their schoolwork by taking a music class or an arts class. Or if you have no musical talent, like myself, maybe you want to do something that's more wellness-related and mental health or social, emotional learning-related. I absolutely love an idea of having something that's added on about financial wellness. I think we do not do enough of that with our young students, understanding credit, things like that. So that's probably another conversation about how that could get implemented into a program of studies. But I would say as is. I don't think that I am in agreement with removing that. If we want to talk about flexibility, can we do something where they get to make a selection? Or maybe it's a D L T, because maybe there are some learners that need that extra time. But I would reduce it only with some guidelines or roadblocks that say, here's kind of where you can take that credit and move it, and so you have some flexibility, but not total flexibility. Because I do think a well-rounded learner is what we're looking for, and I think we do a lot of pressures. And I don't want to put students in a position to be adding more onto their plate from an academic perspective and not being able to have that kind of downtime in there. So I guess.
Thanks. Were you ready, Jess, or?
Yeah, yeah. No, I think that, you know, if we were trying to, if our charge was just to find a potential solution to allow for more flexibility, then we have a potential solution and, you know. But if our charge is really to think about also what requirements make students best ready for life after, that's a much bigger discussion. And I think that, you know, I appreciate, Bill, as you said, you know, the personal finance, the ethics, the digital literacy, there's A I is coming down the pipeline. You know, what are the skills that our students are really going to need? So I think that probably needs a more rigorous look at, you know, all of the options out there. Yeah, I think the solution has to fit the problem. So if we were trying to solve a small problem, you know, I'd feel comfortable, I think, you know, going with a small adjustment. But it seems like we're actually wanting to consider a bigger, you know, issue here, which is, are we really preparing our students for life after, you know, Westford Academy? And definitely, I wanted to ask, where are we seeing the request for more flexibility? Is it from our ninth graders that are wanting that?
It's been from families for a number of years.
From all grades?
Students, no, from students at the academy, from students at Westford Academy who are looking for more ability and flexibility within the schedule. And it could be, it could be at any grade level. I mean, you know, Tom mentioned one of them. I know Catherine mentioned in a previous meeting just some of the challenges that students have, depending on what their I E P is requiring for them. They might not have enough flexibility. So it's, I do think that historically, and I will say, this is my eleventh year here in the district. When I came here eleven years ago, as a principal at the middle school, I was already hearing from families who were transitioning to the academy who would be upset about not being able to access the courses that they wanted to be able to take. And so what, just what does that look like? So that's where we started talking about, is there enough flexibility in there? I know there's been criticism as to whether, well, is that really, you know, something that is our, that's a priority for us? And I think as we are trying to meet, I think, our students' mental well-being, I think we should be talking with families and students about providing the flexibility. So that's kind of where my feeling has come from it. Philosophically and in theory, I agree with many of the things that have been said, right? And I've said this before already, I've been an artist my entire life, and I believe wholeheartedly in it. I am struggling with increasing anything. And you just listed five courses that would be awesome to have. There's no room in student schedules for those courses. And so if you're increasing the, or keeping it as it is, or increasing it in some way, you're, I'm worried about you're not seeing the unintended consequences of that.
I, maybe to summarize better, can we look at the wellness curriculum, the phys ed and health standards, a revamp of our phys ed and health curriculum at W A? And again, like, you know, I'm guessing that our wellness teachers at W A have not had a lot of collective time to sit this year and talk about it, with all the other P D offerings going on. I'm sure it'll be on the agenda from Mr. Toomey, because this is- I'm sure it'll be on the agenda, from, from Mr. Toomey, because this is being so talked about. But I think we have an opportunity to reshape the path a little bit. And, and, you know, address the standards, talk about what, what we envision the Westford student to leave here as.
One other thing, I'll just, just if I could just add this one thing, because I
I just want to make sure we get around-
I don't think we've said it before, is making so that everybody's also aware that Desi, right now, is, is looking at, since the MCAS has been taken off the table, the governor, along with the previous commissioner, has put together a graduation requirement statewide.
Counsel.
Counsel, that they are doing that work right now. So there's another thing to consider, maybe not making any changes, and waiting to see what that says, or making a, but I'm just saying, throwing that information out there for everybody.
When does that get finalized, is it like a year or two?
I don't know exactly, they've been talking about, I mean, they're doing, right now, they're doing listening tours right now.
Just want to make sure everyone's had a chance to weigh in, so why don't we finish out the-
Yes, Catherine.
Can I just, you know, I appreciate all the feedback tonight. I do think, Dr. Two, as you said, I also came in this evening going, you know, this is a conversation that really should be, you know, including Dan Toomey, the curriculum coordinators, and there is a place where we leave it as is, and that maybe we revisit, you know, giving more time to get some more feedback. You know, and Jess, you, you mentioned about kind of, what was the actual original charge? And maybe that we are very specific on what that charge was, I mean, and to get that flexibility, and that maybe they can, we can work more and, with the Program of Studies, you know, when that comes to us in the fall at some point, that maybe we revisit the conversation. But I think I, I just felt, I really needed to make this point. I, you know, and Laurie and Bill, you know, in theory, I totally agree with everything you're saying. You know, in a perfect world, that's exactly what we would be doing. But in practice, unfortunately, that is potentially hindering a number of students. And I have had, you know, Dr. Two, you mentioned it, and I've said it again before, I have had numerous conversations with a variety of different parents since pretty much my day-one involvement in CPAC, four, five years ago at this point, all saying the same thing about how their kids on IEPs, or the students on IEPs in middle school, and the choices or offerings, you know, that happen in middle school, and the impact that has on them in their high school. Now, I haven't personally had that experience, for a variety of different reasons, but what I can tell you as a parent who has students on IEPs, it's not an easy path all the time, and you look at a lot of other students, a lot of the time, going, you know, they get to make choices, or things come so, a bit easier for them, or there's not always a hurdle. And so, I think at this moment in time, until maybe we can look at the middle school and, and have time to maybe rejig some of the situations that we're creating in that ninth and tenth grade, I think the flexibility is something key right now that we need to be doing for these students, who life is hard, you know, for a number of these students, don't get me, you know, they're not the ones getting awards on award night, they're not typically, you know, always captains of football teams or whatever, and so, I think if we can create some flexibility for, to just to help them graduate, I think that's where we've got to stop and think, what does equity mean in our district right now, when it's not perfect? And, and yes, in theory, we would have all of this, I completely agree, completely agree with, with the idea of a full-rounded student. But when our system is imperfect, and it's actually negatively impacting a number of students who already have, potentially has, you know, a lot of hurdles to cross, what can we do right now to alleviate them? And, and that's really where I have to, to come back, where, on the flexibility component.
So we're kind, we're looking at the class of two thousand and thirty?
Yeah.
That gives us a whole nother year before these kids would come into potentially new graduation requirements. Is there something we can do in the meantime with the middle school situation to make it easier?
I think those are bigger conversations about math and requirements and leveling. And
Scheduling.
And scheduling. So I guess, it's, the hard thing about being chair is I don't want to speak first, so I was trying to, but my brain kept leaping in at different points that people were making. And so I just want to make it clear how I feel as one of seven, that my guiding light is flexibility. Again, I think it's something I've heard every year that I'm on here. It comes up in different ways with VPA, with students from middle school limitations in their schedule, and that has been my, my personal lens for the working group recommendation, and for this policy review. I don't worry about academic overli, overload, I think that's an advisory, that's a place for advising, not for hard coding it into policy. I think we have asked staff to pivot across the board in all levels, whether they're moving buildings in the last couple of years with the budget changes, whether they're moving buildings or grade levels. I think we're giving a year to look through this curriculum thoughtfully. We are the what, not the how, and I trust our experts to look at that curriculum and do it well, and they have a year to do that, I don't feel like this is a rush. I actually kind of feel like the VPA is a little bit reactive, because the PE has been a longer conversation for us. And I do support that in theory, but I think it's not a change I support right now in this moment, I see this as a long game, I think we are starting a process that has a yearly review of a program of studies. I think we have heard the willingness to evaluate schedules, to evaluate levels, to evaluate gate, gates, I guess, that happen for students of, like, you took this in seventh grade, therefore, this is your sophomore year schedule. I think there is overall a willingness to evaluate all of those things, and I think that will come with time, and I want to let that play out. The statewide timeline, who, who can predict? I, I am perfectly comfortable being honest that our, that we are eighty percent of mass core for VPA, I think that's, I'm okay with that at this moment in time, I think long-term, it's something I want to keep revisiting. But again, I think what, what we could make, like, a incremental moderate change of something that has come up time and time again, that could impact next year's freshmen, is a two-point-five change for PE. And that feels measured, I loved that quote, that phrase you used, Jess, about a solution matching a problem. To me, that, the first problem is flexibility, and I think that two-point-five credit is the first solution for that. I hear the discussions about whole child, I think that could all come into play with our next-year STIP, too.
Yeah.
Like, I, I guess I just see this as a much longer discussion, but what's in front of me today is whether or not to make this change to the senior DLT credits, to an annual program of studies review, and to reducing PE two-point-five with the full intention that those standards in, whether it's the yearly merged program idea, or the freshman wellness idea, I fully trust our experts that that is going to be a thoughtful incorporated plan forward in the curriculum, and so that's my personal take as one of seven. But I am at the will of the committee. I am, I am just one vote in that, in that stance. And so, as chair, what I'm really looking for, though, is how do we get to a decision at our next meeting? I'm still hearing a lot of split, and so, what I'm trying to figure out is, what do we do next?
And I, I just want to add, too, because this is something that's been on my mind, is that sometimes we get this critique that all of our decisions are unanimous. And sometimes it seems like, oh, you guys have already decided something when you walk in the door, this is, this is a result of open meeting law, we are not allowed to discuss this ahead of time, this is why all of us have all of these two weeks of thoughts, or, or a year of thoughts, that we're sharing real time and trying to figure this out as seven individuals, so if this, it looks uncomfortable, it's because it is uncomfortable, and that's okay. Just wanted to add that.
I mean, for a policy committee, I think, you know, it, it doesn't sound like there's any kind of tweaks regarding any of the language, or-
I, I have like, just a few grammatical-
Yeah.
That I can take that offline with you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I read today- I've got like, three or four, like, some sentence structure changes that I would recommend, but we don't need to talk through that, I think all of us together.
Perfect. So the, really, the only thing is, is that it's the P, it's specifically the PE and health and the VPA, which I think we have, we should be looking at them different, in the sense that PE came out to us through a recommendation of a working group, Tom was involved, the principal was involved, whereas I don't think VPA maybe has had the same level of a working group, and, and so, you know, do we potentially park both of them, or do we park VPA and ask for more, or do we feel, you know, we, we be ready to make a take a direction on, on PE, so.
So, okay.
Well, I just, I wonder if a way forward is to clarify what our expectations are for this decision, like, I'm wondering if we're trying to do too much with one decision?
Yeah.
And if that might be helpful, and perhaps to commit to some other mechanism of addressing the larger question next year, and the STIP is a, is a great way of doing that, there may be others.
Couple things. So, the discussions, so VPA was brought up to the working group, and bearing levels of support. The other thing was, there was a lot of discussion about community service being a requirement of graduation, there was discussion about financial literacy, and, you know, a lot of those discussions came back to, some of those things are already embedded in curriculum. Right, so, to, to add another class to address those was removing that flexibility. But that, those topics are there, you know, I fully agree that we need to be head-on to AI, right, but that's, again, most likely going to be embedded in every class, because we need to teach our students how to write papers, with the fact that AI is there to write it for you. Yeah, so.
I think the, I think the only concern that I have is that from, from department to department, there is a strict focus on those content areas, and I think phys ed and health wellness provides more of a umbrella, you know, capture point, and, and, you know, boots-on-the-ground sort of mentality, where, you know, there's frequent check-ins on students, they're, they're meeting, whether it's, whether long-term, it's, it's a classroom, gym, outdoors, hybrid sort of model, I mean, this, again, that's, that's for wellness to take in the future, but I think there is a my feeling is that there is a, an urgency right now to make sure that our students are being seen, that they're being addressed, that we're thinking about all the different components to ensure that they are, are leaving.
But I don't think that's a zero-sum equation, I mean, I think we, we've heard, and I'm sure we'll hear it next week, next meeting with the six to eight, and the nine to twelve, about embedding SEL in, like, all of our staff, all of our interactions. We just heard it in K to five. I don't think reducing two-point-five of PE is the zero-sum reduction in SEL, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, I'm just going to go back to the standards again, I think it, you know, the charge that we're asking on this scale, I mean, you know, our K to five leaders addressed it, they're shifting from one day a week to two days a week to address the standards.
But they're doing it in the fall, to be fair, right? So like, we're, we're saying, like, this proposal is for next September at WA.
Fall, next September.
Right, sorry, next, next.
Twenty-six.
Thank you. Right, but while the elementary is proposing a change for September.
Right.
So, that, I think that's a data point to me that says, this is not rushed.
And our curriculum coordinator has backed this, like-
I, I do, I, Brian's not here to say, I will tell you, Brian is not an advocate for this reduction.
Yeah.
He's, he's just said, this is what it could look like. But he, he, even in, I mean, he was in the working group with you, he never said, we should be reducing wellness from twelve-point-five to ten, so I want to be clear about that, he's never said that. He's just said, when asked the questions, what might this look like? How, what are different ways in which we could do this, he was a part of that conversation, yeah.
Right, and I, I think it may have been received by, as, and, and I'm not trying to speak for anyone. Well, I'll speak for myself, it, it was received as, this is an acceptable model. And that's how I received it.
And again, we're the what?
Right.
Right, like, the, the model, the delivery is the how.
So, but to, to follow on that, like, upon reflection and looking back at notes, I, I do think I may have received that message less clearly than, than I would have liked, and that may have informed a different outcome for me.
Sure, I, I am going to say, and Tom, this isn't, this isn't at you, I'm kind of frustrated that we gave this charge to a working group, and I don't feel we've really gotten clarity in one sense, a recommendation was made to us in a presentation in December, and yet, we've heard so many different bits of information come out of this working group, that it doesn't sound like there was actual clarity in a recommendation, and I'm, I'm kind of disappointed that-
I'm going to interrupt, because I, I don't think, I understand the frustration,
Yeah.
but I don't think that's a fair statement. They, because I, what Dan, what Principal Toomey presented was the vote, told you how, it was like, seven to three, this was the recommendation, this is what, I, the way I took it is, the, this committee, after, after having all of these conversations, looking at all of the requirements, and looking at different things, they came back with that this was, I think he even used the word, a compromise, right? And this was something that seemed to be, it seemed to be a reasonable compromise, and then since then, though, we've heard a lot of information. So now, you know, I think-
I feel like there's holes being poked in this.
Right, but I think that's, I think, and I think to some, you know, there's been some confusion, and I, I respect the fact, like I said, I met with the Wellness Department, I met with the VPA Department, and they expressed their dissatisfaction about not being a part of the conversation. I will respectfully say, that's why we have a curriculum coordinator, and that's why we have administrators to, to, to do some of this work as well, too. And, so I feel like, I, I understand how frustrating this has been, because this conversation has, has gone on, I think, longer than people had anticipated, and even if anybody was paying attention at the beginning, and we did this, and then it became a policy thing, so it then is like, we're having this conversation now, instead of even back when it, when it first came up. But it went from a recommendation from the group to the policy work of the school committee.
And that, there was a lot of discussion about that as well, within the working group, was, what was, you know, if, the policy, the working group was not to write the policy, it was just to, this is what we believe. You know, and, and, yeah, it was a consensus, and that's-
And that's why the policy group took the recommendation and put it in there, so it's not that the policy group is advocating for this, we took the recommendation from the working group.
How, how compatible are the wellness and physical education standards?
There, it's one standard, if you, if you read the, if you pull it up, it's the, I think, physical health and wellness state standards. So it's actually-
They're integrated.
They're integrated, that's the word, thank you, Laurie. And there's a number of districts also integrating them, you'll see on their Program of Studies that they're now calling it like a wellness block.
And so we're, the credits are not necessarily your traditional, I'm in gym, doing badminton, right, it's encompassing all these other wellness type of-
Yeah.
Because I think that that's where you kind of make that a whole, whole person a little bit.
Yeah.
It's not just, we're requiring somebody to, who maybe doesn't enjoy physical education in that same traditional way, to have a little bit more of a well-m, well-rounded program. And I think to Bill's point, that's where you can maybe look at that curriculum, by those curriculum coordinators, to integrate whole-person wellness from financial literacy, like, there's places where you could stretch those components, based on the curriculum guidelines, obviously, from guessing.
And I, and I read this, I read the standards, you know, and- And I and I read this I read the standards you know and like I as I was reading it I and I actually spoke to Brian about this after I'd read them going have have you had a conversation with like ELA and um you know maybe history or civics or you know some of the other teachers I was like because as I was reading these standards there was some actually that really stood out to me that these could absolutely be touched upon across curriculum and and that's really the best way to to be teaching is that cross curricular approach so um you know I I just think it would be interesting for you to to have a look.
Just want to bring us back um this diving into the standards is excellent background information but I would say definitely crosses into the how and I want to bring us back to the what so um I guess I lack of any other narrowing of thoughts we have a draft that we will re revisit um May twenty-seventh and.
Are we ready to vote in two weeks?
Is there more information that someone needs?
I don't think that there's for me I don't know that there's more information that we can get in two weeks because it for me it would almost be the what does the curriculum like what is it even possible but it whatever we decide it's going to be it's I I do have faith in our very capable and professional staff that they will make it happen one way or the other right um.
I suppose the question is do do we have do you have clarity in it or do we keep it as is and look to vote later on in next school year if you needed more information more groups or?
So so.
I think in that option we would vote to change all the things we've already agreed on right and we would just leave the PE credit for later just to declare.
Yeah and then we could sit down as a school committee and give a very specific as Jess was saying you know like you said what was the actual initial charge what was the initial problem maybe we sit down and put a very clear um charge together to to say this is the information or this is the issue.
You know you present it as is and it either votes for or against is the other right it's this is the recommendation of the working group.
I was going to say it's understanding what does the vote mean.
Yeah and it just votes and either it votes up or it votes down.
Yeah well it's the graduation requirements policy so we do need to pass some sort of a graduation you know.
For twenty thirty so we're talking one year in between and we're talking the freshman at twenty-six twenty-seven so.
Um with the competency determination in there though I know we've.
But we voted on that.
We already voted on it.
So I think we're covered for that yeah.
I think you're saying everything else in the policy though goes into effect this year other than the graduation requirement was not the only change.
Was like I'm trying to remember were the electives.
Was it just some of the changing the the numbers thirty-two and a half?
Yes we're changing the the senior.
We were giving seniors one less. Requirements.
You can vote on.
Right the policy can say whatever we want it to say right like whether we want the DLT to take effect.
Yeah right.
Yes that's what I I'm trying to figure out is are we even okay with voting on that and leaving the credits to a later stage.
I feel like this has been a long time coming I'm I would be in favor of the two point five reduction.
So I I think that it it needs to come to a vote one way or the other right at this point um and I'm reminded of one of the things that was stated at charting the course which is that we may differ personally but whatever is voted on it is the decision of the school committee and we stand by it right and and I think we'll probably have some more spirited discussion in two weeks around this.
Okay with those closing remarks at ten fifteen I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Sumoed.
Second all in favor?